Good evening. It's a little after 6:30, 6:35 to be exact. It's January 22nd, 2019. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
Councilman Colakut?
Here.
Councilman Miles?
Here.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Here.
Mayor Protem Pitts?
Here.
Mayor Rossini?
Here.
Before we start, I would like to ask our city attorney to report out on our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. We did talk about two items. One anticipated lit and then one we added to the agenda because of an existing litigation matter that was filed today. On both matters, there is no reportable action. That is all.
Thank you. Tonight, we continue our tradition of inviting Villa Park distinguished citizens to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, we are pleased that Sheri Zakowitz has accepted our invitation accompanied by her wonderful husband, Bill. I had the pleasure of spending some time with them within the past few weeks and I'd like to tell you a little bit about them before we have them stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance. And then after the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like you to come forward, be recognized, and take a picture with the council. Okay? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight's distinguished guest, as I mentioned, is Ms. Sheri Zakowitz. Sheri is widely considered to be one of the founding members of the Villa Park Women's League. Sheri and her husband, Bill, have lived in Villa Park for in excess of 50 years. Bill and Sheri have been pillars in this community since shortly after our city was incorporated. Sheri, along with several other men and women, founded the Villa Parks Women League. On the eve of the 50th anniversary of the Villa Parks Women's League, I felt it particularly important to recognize one of its founders. Please welcome Sheri and her husband, Bill. Sheri, if you would stand there, I'd like just to read a little bit more here.
Oh, okay.
Tonight, I am very pleased that Sheri and her husband, Bill, have accepted our invitation to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I recently had the pleasure of joining Sheri and Bill in their home, and I'd like to take a few minutes to say a few words about both of you. Sheri was born and raised in San Diego, California, native Californian. Her father served the United States Navy and retired as a rear admiral. Rear Admiral, excuse me. Sheri and Bill first met while in college at Carnegie Tech, correct me if I'm wrong, later known as Carnegie Mellon University. After dating for four years, they were pulled back and forth between the East Coast and the West Coast, they were married at that time, and eventually landing in Villa Park. After both Sheri and Bill graduated college, Bill took a job as an engineer and an executive for several firms, including Douglas Aerospace, later known as McDonnell Douglas, and Bose Electronics. Bill became a recognized leader in the fields he worked in while Sheri raised three wonderful children. She had successful businesses of her own, all while helping to form our own Women's League. Bill and Sheri raised three children in Villa Park. Their children attended Villa Park schools, and they made fast friends amongst the growing residents in Villa Park. Through the Women's League, she assisted in beautifying the city of Villa Park and created community bonds that have lasted a lifetime. Amongst the various charitable activities performed by the Women's League, they have planted trees that prosper to this day and have helped turn our schools into the successes that they are now. Please give a hand again to Sheri and her husband, Bill. Their contributions helped lay the foundation for our wonderful city. Thank you for coming. And now, if you would mind, the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can we still stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you please join us?
Let me do one, too. Just cuss.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask all of those in the audience to please silence your cellphones or turn them off if possible. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the City Council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found at the entrance to the City Council chambers, and speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Before that, let's go ahead and have presentations. We have a presentation this evening from the Saravilla Middle School. Is it a science program?
Principal Ogan.
Principal Ogan, it's a pleasure. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Please tell us about your program here.
Well, thank you, Mayor Rossini and Councilman. I am so pleased to share with you. I'm Lisa Ogan, principal at Saravilla Middle School, very proud principal of 1,000 students going to our campus right now. And of that, we have a special event for you tonight. We have our Makers Club students, part of one of our 17 clubs that we offer on campus right now. And so, it's very exciting what we have going on, so many extracurricular activities, this being one of them, under the direction of our STEM teacher, Mr. Dan Baker. He's going to share with you, along with our other STEM program called College and Career Readiness Lab. We have two labs on campus. And of that, the STEM, thank you to Councilman Zimmerman, and through the Villa Park Rotary Club. Again, we couldn't do these things if it wasn't for our partnership with you as a community, so we're very excited to share what we have for you tonight. Six students have come along with the Makers Club, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Dan Baker, the teacher of our STEM program and of the Makers Club, and he's going to share with you about that all right now. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. I appreciate this very much. I'm going to do a little PowerPoint presentation. The thing is that this PowerPoint presentation is a presentation that I've been working on for a long time, and it's actually a presentation designed to go like a half hour, 45 minutes. So, that's not going to happen. There we are. All right. Good. Well, I guess the claim to fame at the moment is that after school, we have a club called the Makers Club. And there's a thing in Orange County called the Orange County Makers Challenge. We've been doing that for the last two years, where the kids are supposed to come up with an invention. We're supposed to build a prototype, and it just never went well. One of the biggest problems is just imagination of what to invent. I mean, you know, it's hard to invent something on cue. Most people who invent something, you know, do it out of inspiration. When you ask a group of kids what they want to invent, pretty much, they usually choose rocket boots. And the thing is that that was my idea, okay? Okay. They stole that from me because I had that idea when I was 12, okay? So, you know, I'm annoyed with Iron Man and Syndrome for stealing my idea. But the problem is that I can't put rocket boots on my junior high school students. The parents would sue me when the rockets explode. So, the OC Maker Challenge just didn't quite work out for us, but I still feel like I want to do something big. I know that as a junior high school student, I always thought big. And junior high school students, by their very nature, think big. They don't think small. They don't imagine their futures as mediocrity. They imagine themselves as being the star player in a Super Bowl, you know, football game, or when terrorists take over the school, they're the ones who tackle them and arrest them. And those are the kinds of dreams that you have when you're in junior high school. You don't dream small. And I wanted to keep things big, and I wanted to give them an opportunity to do something big. And in my STEM lab, we have 18 different desks and a different technology at each desk. That of them by itself is big, because they don't just study the technology in theory. It's hands-on. Every station is hands-on, where they get to actually touch and perform, you know, hands-on experiments with this technology. This was something that was never available to us when we were young, and of course, we would have given anything for it. But there was one station called Flight where we build rockets, and we actually go out on the football field and launch our rockets, but it didn't have anything for flying an airplane. And I saw a simulator that was available, that they have over at Kenyon High School. So, I emailed my boss and said, hey, if you got any extra money laying around, I'd love to have one of those. And I was joking, but she wasn't when she wrote back and said, okay. And so, we got a flight simulator. Part of my deal, though, was that I had to write the curriculum, and I don't really, I didn't, I'm not qualified to write the curriculum, so I had to study it. So, I spent six months studying it, and that meant I had to go back to the birdmen who jumped off of cliffs and buildings and killed themselves, up to the Wright Brothers, which was a real pleasure. The Wright Brothers are amazing human beings. And so, I had it in my head that it would be really cool to rebuild one of their airplanes, but of course, there was no way that was ever going to happen, until one of my robotics team member's father, who happened to have been the president of the Rotary, walked up to me and said, hey, you know, we've got this grant that's meant for something big, and nobody took advantage of it last year. Can you think of anything big? And I go, I think I can help you there. So, we presented the idea, and now we're in the process of building a life-size replica of the Wright Brothers airplane. And that's in our Makers Club. I brought my students from the Makers Club with me, six of them. Can you guys come up, please? All right, just right here. All right, welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us.
Now, I'm going to give you a chance at public speaking. Introduce yourself to the board.
I'm Dr. Ogan. I'm Dr. Turner. I'm Dr. Turner. I'm Dr. Turner. I'm Dr. Turner. I'm Dr. Turner.
Nice to meet you all. Welcome.
Welcome.
These students have been in the process of building this thing. We've got the top wing almost completely built. By next week, we'll have both top and bottom wings built in terms of their skeleton, and then we'll skin them. Anybody want to give any information about what we're doing here? Please talk loud if you do. So, that's a rib. If you look at the Wright Brothers airplane, let's see, you can see all these ribs. Those ribs are made out of wood. The Wright Brothers were amazing people. They were craftsmen and scientists, true scientists, not just wannabes, but also just your average, everyday handyman type of craftsmen. They ran a bicycle shop. They manufactured their own bikes, and they knew how to bend wood. See, I thought I knew how to work with wood because I worked in construction. Then we started building this, and I realized, yeah, I don't know how to bend wood. Bending wood is a whole art. It's a whole craft, and we've had to learn that. So, the reason that we're bending wood is because a wing requires a certain shape, an airfoil shape. And the Wright Brothers figured out exactly through science, actually, they pioneered wind tunnels in order to determine this, what the right camber is, and then they used steam wood bending and bent it. And so, we had to bend all, we had to bend 60 of these, and we had to figure out how to do that, and that was a trial and error process, and now we finally got it licked, which means that now we're about to have our wings built. Okay? Anybody else?
The process of bending the wood in general was quite a task. We didn't have steam, but I mean, what's steam nearly evaporated water. So, we soak them in this pipe for a while and hook them up to this.
Form.
Yeah, thank you. That I used to be behind Austin House and help you cut one of those days.
Yeah.
And we looked in there for, I want to say two weeks.
Yeah.
And they took on that form because of that.
We used vices, you know, little.
Lots of clamps.
Clamps, yeah.
And eventually, we have the shape we do now.
Right, so the ribs. And then, of course, our real big problem is space. This is a life-size airplane. It's 32 feet long wingspan. And my room is a long room. We actually have room to build the airplane in my room. The problem is, the next day, I need to use my room, right? And so, it's like, well, what do we do? And the answer is, we had to sort of re-engineer the Wright Brothers airplane. What we had to do was actually cut it into sections, and so, it's actually, each wing is in four sections. And we used a special joint that they actually used in the center, but we put two more on each wing. And it's called a scarf joint, and Max here came in the other day and single-handedly cut all of my scarf joints, so that now we can break those wings down into fours, into quarters, and we can store them back in the storeroom in the rear of the school. So, it's coming along pretty good, although I have to say there are challenges ahead. Well, I sort of figured that people were going to come out of the woodwork and help us, but that didn't really happen, so we're sort of figuring it out as we go. And one of the things that we have ahead of us that we're a little worried about, we'll figure it out, but the Wright Brothers, they actually fabricated all of their own hardware. There's all this metal hardware that they fabricated for connections, and that's coming next. So, if you know anybody who's good with that sort of thing.
Well, that brings me to a question. We want to celebrate the incredible work that the school's doing, that you're doing, but most importantly, the students are doing. How can our residents, who are some of the brightest people in Orange County, engineers, architects, aviators, pilots, navigators, you name it, just very creative people, how can they assist you? Who can they contact at the school?
I so appreciate that. I really do. What I have are, we would never have done this if other enthusiasts before us hadn't come before us and done this, because the Wright Brothers plane doesn't exist anywhere. They actually went back and looked at old photographs and videos and figured out how to do it, these engineers, but I can't get them to call me back, right? But they figured out how to do it, and they were kind enough, they were at least good enough to put their plans online where we could download it. And in those plans are plans for these metal brackets that we need help with. Basically, anyone who could look at those plans and help us with any part of those plans, we would welcome.
Should they contact Principal Ogan, then?
By all means, yes. Yeah, that would be great.
Why don't we do that? I would love if you would stand by with us and take a picture with council, and I want to give each and every one of you a huge hand. It's such an honor to have you before us, and it's great to see the work that you're doing with our kids. It's truly amazing, and really look forward to the first flight, so to speak.
Yeah, thank you. I'm looking forward to that, too. Yeah.
So, thank you. [applause] I don't know about you, Mayor, but I did not do anything like that in junior high. I think I dissected a frog, maybe.
Yeah, I think maybe a cat. I did a cat.
Maybe held a boa, constructor. Nothing cool, that's for sure. Next up for presentations is our very own Orange County Sheriff's Department, Lieutenant Rich.
Thank you, and I have to say, what a difficult act to follow. What a great group of teachers and very bright children. After seeing that, I really have hope that our future is extremely bright, because what an amazing group of people right there. So, thank you for everything you guys are doing, and I'd love to see it when it's done.
Absolutely.
Do you need a volunteer to lie? I think I'm in. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Protem, council members, city staff, and residents. I'm Lieutenant Patrick Rich, and I am here to present the December 2018 Villa Park Crime Report. In the month of December 2018, the Orange County Sheriff's Department responded to 258 calls for service. Of those calls for service, 175 were self-initiated and 83 were assigned. There were three traffic collisions reported during that time period, 21 traffic citations issued, and six parking citations issued. A breakdown of the traffic accidents are as follows. On 12/19, Villa Park Road and Prada Woods, there was a non-injury traffic collision involving three vehicles. On 12/23, on Wanda and Catella, there was a hit-and-run report taken. And on 12/27, the 1800 Block of Valley, there was a, excuse me, a driver of a vehicle struck a wall. He did remain at the scene. For your Part 1 crimes, I have five Part 1 crimes to report for the month of December. Those are as follows. On 12/3, on the 17,000 Block of Bishop, there was a burglary, forced entry into a residence, and the loss was jewelry. There was a vehicle burglary on December 27th. That was at the corner of, excuse me, Lincoln and Fitchin Ranch Road. A gardening truck was parked alongside of the road, and the gardeners were working in the area, and other vehicles stopped behind the trailer where they had all their equipment loaded in and cut off their locks and helped theirself to some of their equipment that they had stored inside there. There are two reported thefts at the same time, the 18,000 Block of Valencia Circle. In that incident, a merchant, a local merchant, not one in this area, but one who lives in the city of Villa Park, was at a bank in Orange. It's believed they were followed home after making a transaction, and when they arrived at their home in the city of Villa Park, they left a bank bag carrying a fair amount of cash inside their vehicle. Someone immediately after the resident walked inside their home, let themselves into their unlocked vehicle and ran away with the bag into a waiting car. We made contact with the bank, and they have had a few of those similar-type incidents involving merchants. So, I would like to warn everyone, if you are a merchant, you do deal with cash in your retail business, please be extremely careful when moving that cash, when going to the bank, and just be cautious of your surroundings and have situational awareness, and try not to put yourself in a situation where that can happen to you. And just always be alert, and if something doesn't look right, just please call the Sheriff's Department. We'd be happy to come out and talk to or engage whatever may be bothering you. We also had a reported shoplifting. Three subjects at the Ralphs down here ran into the store, took items from the pharmacy, and ran out. Significant calls during the month of December, I think I discussed this last month, we did have a false report of our bomb threat at Villa Park Elementary, Villa Park High School. That was related to a total of nine threats for schools in the area. We set up a unified command, made contact with some of our local agencies, and were able to quickly determine that was a hoax. Also, just good work by your deputies that I would like to note. On January 4th, we had a residential burglary in our city where subjects were going around knocking on doors, seeing if someone was home. They found a home that they decided they wanted to enter after believing no one was home. They went into the back and kicked in the sliding glass door, made entry into the residence, were scared away by the alarm. Deputies were in the area and were able to quickly apprehend them. Excuse me. These subjects, all three of them, were taken into custody, and they are believed to be involved in a burglary ring operating in North and South Orange Counties. Hopefully, they were able to put a stop to that. The next morning, deputy saw a vehicle early in the morning driving around, looked a little lost. He followed around a little bit, observed a traffic violation, initiated a traffic stop of that vehicle, contacted the occupants who said they were lost on their way back from Pechanga to go into LA, somehow wound up in the lovely city of Villa Park. Fortunately, the driver had a warrant, and one thing led to another, and all three occupants of that vehicle wound up going to jail for possession of stolen property, stolen checks, stolen mail, and personal identifying information. They had over 100 pieces of fraudulent or stolen credit cards and stolen mail. So, it just, being freeway close, we always have to keep in mind that people who are out looking for crimes of opportunity will, you know, even though they're not from this area, possibly wind up in Villa Park. That is all I have. If anyone has any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Okay, please.
It sounds like we had a significant uptick in our crime rate.
Actually, our crime stats are fairly consistent with where we have been. I think, actually, they're trending down a little bit in Villa Park, and as I shared with you, I think, last month, if we were one of the safest cities in Orange County, or we historically are, I think I'm just a little more forthcoming with the information and the stories I tell, because I want people to be aware of what possibly may happen and try to keep them to, or, you know, get them to lock their doors and lock their windows and lock their cars, just so they're more aware of this and help protect themselves from being victimized.
Of course, in Villa Park, we have no tolerance for any crimes.
And I would like to come up here and say absolutely nothing happened during the month. That would be the greatest report I could ever give. There's also, you know, with social media, a lot of things that you wouldn't hear about before, you hear about in social media, you read it, it's reposted, your friends talk about it. The Sheriff's Department is engaged in putting events that happen out on social media, just because we want people to be aware of what's going on, and again, hopefully, so that they're a little smarter about the way they go about their daily lives, and, you know, maybe we can keep this from happening to them.
What I can say, in my experience, is that your deputies are proactive and polite and engaging, and they're keeping the wheels on the patrol vehicles turning.
It sounds like we had a significant uptick in our crime rate.
Actually, our crime stats are fairly consistent with where we have been. I think actually they're trending down a little bit in Villa Park. And as I shared with you, I think last month, if we were one of the safest cities in Orange County, where we historically are, I think I'm just a little more forthcoming with the information and the stories I tell because I want people to be aware of what possibly may happen and try to keep them to, or you know, get them to lock their doors and lock their windows and lock their cars just so they're more aware of this and help protect themselves from being victimized.
Of course, in Villa Park, we have no tolerance for any crimes.
And I would like to come up here and say absolutely nothing happened during the month. That would be the greatest report I could ever give. There's also, you know, with social media, a lot of things that you wouldn't hear about before. You hear about in social media, you read it, it's reposted, your friends talk about it. The Sheriff's Department is engaged in putting events that happen out on social media just because we want people to be aware of what's going on. And again, hopefully so that they're a little smarter about the way they go about their daily lives and, you know, maybe we can keep this from happening to them.
What I can say, in my experience, is that your deputies are proactive and polite and engaging and they're keeping the wheels on the patrol vehicles turning and that is huge. It makes the residents feel safer, it makes the council members feel at ease when we go to bed at night, that our community is protected. And I want to thank you and each and every one of the deputies that patrols this community. You're all doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
And Lieutenant Rich, I'd like to extend my appreciation as well. We, Law Enforcement Appreciation Day passed us already, but please pass on to all of the people that serve Villa Park on your team that we really, really do appreciate all that they do every day to keep us safe.
I did and I will again, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, Orange County Fire Authority.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protam, members of the council. My name's David Harper, Battalion Chief with the Orange County Fire Authority. Just over the last 30 days, there were 40 responses for service into the city of Villa Park, the majority of those being medical services for emergency medical services. Just this afternoon, fire did occur in the 18,000 Block of Oakfield Drive. The quick work by the firefighters from OCFA along with the assistance from the City of Orange Fire Department, they were able to keep that fire from extending into the house and also were happy to report that there were no injuries during that incident. The Orange County Sheriff's Department, as well as Orange County Animal Control, assisted us with that. There were several pets on the scene and happy to report that none of them were injured either. I don't believe we've had the opportunity to report out that last November, the Orange County Fire Authority did provide emergency preparedness training to the citizens of Villa Park and we're looking forward to providing that training again coming up in the spring. We're going to be working with Mr. Franks to make sure that that occurs again for the residents. The OCFA and all the Orange County Fire Chiefs are embarking on a new fire safety campaign that just started this month, try and get that out to all the residents. In addition to making sure that everybody has working fire alarms or smoke alarms in their house, the other thing we want to focus on is making sure that everybody has two ways out of their house and also that all of the residents are practicing those drills with their families. Because that's the most important thing when a fire does occur, is that everybody else, is everybody gets out safely. All of your possessions, as much as everybody likes their possessions, all those things can be replaced. It's you and your family members that can't, so make sure that you're practicing and working with your family so that everybody can get out safely. And I'm here to answer any questions if you guys have any questions.
I'd like to report, I did visit the site today. When I pulled up and I was pulling up maybe 20 minutes after the call went out, there were seven fire engines there, there were six Sheriff Black and Whites, and not counting ambulances, et cetera, on the go. So, I was very, very impressed with the response and the residents of Villa Park ought to know how quick and how thorough the response was. It was incredible to watch. Then, before I left, two animal control vehicles pulled up. So, they're on the spot and one of the neighbors actually said to me, he goes, "You know, this is sad to happen, but I actually feel a little safer tonight knowing that that kind of response happens." So, I just want to thank both the sheriff and the Orange County Fire Authority for all the work and the protection they give us because we get a great level of service, especially demonstrated today.
I concur and thank you very much for that report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
That ladder truck here, too. That was cool. That ladder truck.
Next up, Villa Park Library.
She is out today, so there's...
Next up, we have individual council meeting attendance reports. Given the new council and the fact that most committees were dark during the month of December and/or January, majority of January, I think there's only one committee that may have something to report.
I do. I'm going to be reporting on the Orange County Sanitation District. Since 2016, I've had the privilege of being the city's appointed member to the Orange County Sanitation District Board of Directors. And tonight, I'll begin my report by providing some background on what the Orange County Sanitation District is. I'm not sure that everybody in the city does know that. With an annual budget of over a half a billion dollars, the Sanitation District provides treatment of all municipal wastewater from Irvine to the Los Angeles County line. And the Orange County Sanitation District serves a population of approximately 2.5 million residents and treats approximately 185 million gallons of wastewater daily. The Sanitation District is governed by a Board of Directors consisting of 25 board members appointed from 20 cities, two sanitary districts, two water districts, and one representative from the Board of Supervisors. And currently, that representative is Supervisor Michelle Steele. Dave Chauver, Mayor of Stanton, is currently the chairman of the board. With a career background in water and wastewater and infrastructure, I was initially appointed to represent Villa Park on the Sanitation District Board in 2016 and I've served on the district's operations committee since that time. I'm pleased to report that I was appointed to the position of Vice Chair of the Operations Committee last week, which is good for Villa Park, but it gets better. The current chair is a councilperson from Seal Beach who will be stepping down in early February following a special election to fill her seat on the city council. Under district rules, I will automatically advance to chairman at that time. So, this provides the opportunity to advance to the vice chairman and chairman of the board, if I can so impress my fellow board members. To put this opportunity into perspective, Villa Park has not chaired this board since councilmen win in the 1960s, so this is a big step for us. Like our mayor's appointment to the Orange County Fire Authority Executive Committee last year, such leadership opportunities help to increase our city's visibility, influence, and influence and stature in Orange County. And it provides the opportunity to build relationships with key decision-makers to advance our city's objectives. So, this is, I've striven for this opportunity for Villa Park. On December 19th, I represented the city at the Board of Directors meeting and on January 16th, I was also at the Operations Committee and most of the agenda items addressed routine operations and maintenance projects. However, at the January 16th Operations Committee, a report on the rehabilitation of the headworks of the sanitation district's treatment plant was presented. The headworks receive all of the wastewater and is in the heart, and is the heart of the treatment plant. So, this headworks receives 185 million gallons per day. Sometimes during major storms, it might receive as much as 400 million gallons per day. Anyway, this project will renovate the facilities originally constructed and modified in the 1950s and 60s and will cost hundreds of million of dollars over the next few years. But it's, it will improve the efficiency and reliability of our treatment works. Anyway, I did bring copies of my appointment letter to the vice chairman to share with our council. And again, I appreciate the opportunity to serve the city of Villa Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, it's time for public comments. At this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Opportunities will be also, opportunities will be also provided for public comment on each agenda item. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. Steve?
We received no requests at this time, but I don't know if anyone in the audience is still...
Okay, looks like they have one coming forward now. And on an agenda item?
This is on an agenda item, so...
Then we'll hold that.
That's okay.
Now, we'll move on to agendized public hearings. Our first hearing is the review, is to review and waive reading in full of all ordinance and resolutions on the agenda. Steve, correct me wrong, there's no real staff report on this?
No, sir. Thank you. You're correct.
I will now open the hearing. As stated, there's no report. Council members, do you have any questions about this matter of staff? Is there anyone here to speak at this? Doubtful. Thank you. Council members, is there any discussion on this?
I'll move approval of the recommended action.
Second?
Ready to vote?
Vote.
That passes by a 5-0 vote.
Thank you. Our next hearing is a request for approval of variance 2019-01 at 18631 Rosnow Drive. Let's open a hearing on this.
This is actually, Mayor, this is a request for a approval of a variance, as you're correct, 2019-01 for 18631 Rosnow, and at the same time, it is...
CUP, isn't it?
It's a CUP. 2018-05 at the same address, 18631 Rosnow. That item was continued from the December 18th city council meeting, so they'll be handled jointly as a public hearing item today.
Council members, do you have any questions on this? Or I'm sorry, can, we have the staff report?
Pardon me?
Almost catch you out of the equation here, right?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. As introduced, there are two concurrent applications to be considered this evening. The variance 2019-01 and CUP 2018-05. And I'll provide a brief staff report for each of them, starting with the variance application. Variance 2019-01 is a request to reduce the minimum 50-foot front yard setback to 39 feet 2 inches for a proposed detached accessory building at this address, which is a deviation of 10 feet 10 inches. The subject property has inherent physical features and conditions, including irregular shape. There's also a 10-foot wide utility easement that runs the full length of the west property line, which is, if you're facing the property, it's on the left side, as well as a grade along the north property line that slopes towards the property. These conditions limit potential improvements to the property and the strict application of the minimum front yard setback would deprive the property of privileges that are enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity under the same zoning designation. For this variance request, city staff performed a windshield survey of the existing 19 residences that fronts onto Rosnow Circle, as well as taking estimate front yard setback dimensions and determined that the average front yard setback for all those homes are about 38 feet, which is approximately what the proposed detached accessory building is proposed at, based on their site plan. So, based on these analyses, city staff is recommending approval of this variance application, subject to compliance with the conditions of approval that are contained within the associated resolution. The related application is CUP 2018-05 and this request involves two zoning code sections. As part of updating and renovating the existing residence, the property owner is proposing to build a detached accessory building to store his personal recreational vehicle. Pursuant to the city's zoning code, the maximum allowable height for a detached accessory building is 15 feet and the request is 20 feet to provide that necessary vertical clearance to allow for the storage of this vehicle in this building. The other component of the CUP request involves the garage door. The maximum allowable height per R code is, for a garage door, is eight feet and the request is to put in a 12-foot tall garage door, which again, is to provide the necessary vertical clearance for this vehicle, recreational vehicle. For this application, city staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions of approval contained in the resolution. Public hearing notices were mailed out for each of these applications in accordance with the zoning ordinance and to date, staff has not received any comments for or against this item. That concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time. The property owners are also present this evening and available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of staff on this matter?
We did, the property owner did send requests out notifying all the adjacent property owners and received support on those.
Yeah, in addition to what we're required to send out as a public hearing notices, in advance of the Community Development Committee meeting December 17th, staff did send out courtesy notice letters of this item to the adjacent property owners. And, yeah, there were really no objections to the requests, except for the one resident that was present at the CDC meeting on December 17th. And apparently, those differences were resolved.
So, generally, the sense is that the neighborhood is largely, or overwhelmingly, in support of the project?
Yes, I believe there were 12. Actually, the property owner was able to secure, I think, 12 support letters for both of the applications.
Thank you. Oh, one other question. You mentioned that there is a utility easement. What type of utility easement is it? Is it drainage or power?
On the plans, the, the project, Ken, the mayor for the project noted that it was a drainage easement.
Is it for the property above or...?
That I don't know. Perhaps the property owner can provide some information on that.
Edison, okay, Edison.
Council members, any further questions?
Mayor, we do have one person who indicated she'd like to speak and that's Chantel Tibbetts.
Hello there. My name is Chantel Tibbetts and I reside at 18591 Rosnow Drive.
Welcome.
Thank you. I just came to support Brian and Ferris. We've lived on Rosnow for 20 years and it's a wonderful street and we've seen their plans and are in full support of what they want to do. All these improvements that they do help the value of our, of our neighborhood and everything they've done is in very fine taste and certainly a lot more pleasant to look at than some of the other, you know, things. So, we just appreciate their willingness and we're excited to see how their project keeps, continues to progress.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on this item? Steve?
No, sir.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any further discussion on this matter?
No.
By all means.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to, I support the investments that all of our, many of our members of the community are making in improving their properties and improving Villa Park. It's, it's good to see that our communities continues to be on the upward swing. On another note, RV garages are beginning to proliferate in the E4 zones in our city. A lot of our folks like to RV and they need spaces to keep their vehicles close by. As requests for variances for increased garage heights are also beginning to be seen frequently. So, several months ago, I asked staff to develop a draft revision to our zoning ordinance to provide standard requirements to guide homeowners who desire such projects. And when developed, projects in compliance with this zoning amendment, if adopted by council, will not need to apply to seek council approval and this will really streamline our permitting. So, hopefully in the future, you know, people like the Ferrises will not have quite so many hoops to jump through to get their projects approved.
Thank you. Anything further? I'd just like to have a few words on this. I am familiar with the Ferris family, full disclosure there, but I feel that even with the relationship that we have, I don't feel that I'm prejudiced in any way, shape, or form from ruling on this. We live in a small community. If you live here for more than three or four years, you're going to know quite a few people in Villa Park. And as long as you exercise good judgment and take a look at things on a factual basis, I think you can look at things independently and with a clear conscience. I've been to the site, I've seen the project, I've seen the plans. As I understand it, the one opponent is no longer opposing the project and we have multiple letters of support. Is that correct? Ray?
Yes.
Okay, and we've had multiple public hearings on this matter?
Yeah, this item was brought, as I mentioned before, the CDC on the 7th. We had a pretty fruitful and spirited discussion that evening about the item. And, yeah, in addition to the courtesy notice letters that were sent out, we sent out the, the public hearing notices as required by the zoning ordinance. And so, yeah, it's had its full run of exposure to the public.
Okay. I don't have anything further, but I wanted to make sure I put that on record and that adequate notice has been given to the entire neighborhood and staff to review the... adequate notice has been given to the entire neighborhood and staff to review this, as well as the CDC, and it sounds like it has been the case. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing now. Is there a motion on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve this.
I'll second it.
Mayor, and just for clarity, that's both the variance and the CUP?
Both the CU and the variance, yes.
And the two related resolutions? Yes.
Yes.
All right, let's go ahead and vote. Items four and five, our next hearing is the request for another conditional use permit two zero one eight dash zero six approval at, for approval, at one eight six seven two Mesa Drive. If acceptable, the council would like to conduct this hearing at the same time as we conduct the hearing for item five. Sounds fair to me. And then there's a variance of two thousand eighteen dash zero three on the same item. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve?
No, it's correct. With this, this item?
I know there's been some recent changes, I just wanna make sure we haven't.
Sure. Item number four would be the conditional use permit two oh one eight dash zero six, and the variance is number five is two oh one eight dash zero three, both at one eight six seven two Mesa Drive. We'll handle them just like we did the last item, open up a public hearing jointly, and we'll have Ray make a, Ray making a presentation on this.
You're up again. Thanks, Ray.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. CUP twenty eighteen oh six and variance twenty eighteen oh three were first introduced at the December eighteenth City Council meeting, and were later continued to this meeting to allow the property owner and the architect time to address concerns that were brought up during the December seventeenth, the Community Development Committee meeting. Since the last City Council meeting, the architect revised the plan such that it eliminated requests from both applications, and I'll go over those revisions now, starting with the CUP. Previously, CUP twenty eighteen oh six involved a request to exceed the thirty-eight percent maximum allowable building size and to exceed the eight-foot maximum height for a garage door. The request to exceed the thirty-eight percent maximum allowable building size has been eliminated, based on the size of the property, which is seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty-nine square feet. The maximum allowable building size is approximately six thousand six hundred and thirty-eight square feet, and the revised total building size is six thousand five hundred and forty-nine square feet, which amounts to about thirty-seven point five percent, which is within the thirty-eight percent maximum. Previously, the proposed residence featured a, an enclosed garage on the lower level, which accounted for close to half of the ninety-six hundred square feet that was previously proposed and part of the original plan. The revised plan still features a lower-level parking area, but is no longer enclosed and does not count towards the overall building square footage, which is a total reduction of about twenty-four hundred square feet. Additionally, the upper living space was revised, which resulted in the overall square footage being reduced by almost six hundred and fifty square feet. So that accounted to the reduction of the overall size of the building. With respect to the garage doors, there will be two sets of twelve-foot-tall double-roll-up garage doors for the garage, which will be well-integrated into the design of the building, and as far as visibility, it won't be seen from Mesa Drive or from the adjacent properties. City staff is recommending approval of the CUP, subject to conditions of approval contained in the, the resolution. I'll shift gears now and discuss variance twenty eighteen oh three, which involves a request to reduce the side yard setback along the west property line from fifteen feet to eight feet, to exceed the maximum allowable height for a wall within the front yard setback from three and a half feet to six feet, to exceed the maximum allowable height for a retaining wall along the east and south property line from six feet to fifteen feet at its highest point, and to exceed the maximum allowable roof projection into the side yard setback from forty percent to fifty-nine percent. Based on the revisions of the plans, the variance request to exceed the height for the walls in the front yard setback and the roof projection into the side yard setback has been eliminated. So those two components of the original variance application is no longer part of the variance application. With respect to the side yard setback along the west property line, a variance is still being requested, however, the side yard setback that was proposed at eight feet is now increased to ten feet. So, and then it doesn't affect the, the side yard setback on the opposite side, along the east property line. Relative to the allowable height of the retaining wall along the east and south property line, that still remains unchanged. The applicant wants to stay the course on that, that request.
Can you repeat that, please? Can you repeat what you, the item you just covered?
The retaining wall.
The retaining wall, yeah, that, that's.
Remaining the same height.
Right. Right. That, that remained unchanged on the plans, as I understand it. So, yeah, so now you just have the, the variance request for the side yard setback and the retaining wall. And, and based on that, staff is recommending approval of this variance application, subject to the conditions of approval in, in the resolution. Public hearing notices were mailed out for these applications in accordance with the zoning ordinance. To date, staff received, I did receive inquiries from a couple of residents wanting to know a little bit more about the project. We did receive, Steve received a letter from a resident that lives two doors up outlining the concerns about the variance application. And that pretty much it. I'll conclude my report at this time, and I'll try to answer any questions. The property owner, the applicant, the architect is here as well to, and available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Council members, do you have any questions for staff?
The letter you received from the resident two doors up, is that the Baileys?
Yes.
Okay. And they, they're actually not immediately adjacent, they're separated from the proposed project by one driveway?
That is correct.
Does, you mentioned that the height of the wall is fifteen feet. Does that include the guardrail on top of the proposed retaining wall?
No, it would only include the, the height of the retaining wall.
So what is the total height of the fence slash retaining wall?
Um, is it four feet above the retaining?
Well, it's, it's a guardrail above the retaining wall, three foot six.
Three foot six.
And then below, it's fifteen foot max.
So the total height of the fence projection is about eighteen and a half feet?
Including the guardrail, yes.
So that's in excess of three times our standard requirement for six-foot-high maximum walls?
Yes.
Ray?
I'd like to clarify that, if I could.
But is a guardrail actually supposed to be considered as part of a wall?
Part of it.
It's, it's physically part of it, but it's not retaining anything, so what the request is on the variance is for the height on the retaining wall and not the guardrail.
What's the purpose of the guardrail?
To keep folks from falling over onto the other property.
Is it for vehicular traffic?
It's a safety feature.
Or pedestrian traffic, or both? Is it?
For the property owner's safety.
Okay.
And visitors there.
Is that, that's gonna be a new driveway, correct me if I'm wrong, right along that wall there?
That's correct.
Okay. So more for vehicular traffic than pedestrian traffic?
That's correct.
Okay. And what is the guardrail gonna be made out of? What is it proposed?
I believe the, the material is wrought iron, if I understand correctly.
Okay. And is wrought iron suited to retain a vehicle in case of somebody losing control, for instance?
It'll be designed to take lateral load, yeah.
Okay. Do we have engineering specs on that?
No, but a structural engineer stamp, that's, that's my stamp.
We haven't designed it yet, 'cause we have to get the house approved first, so we're, we've got a schematic design, but we don't have an actual guardrail design, 'cause we don't know what's gonna happen yet.
So if I'm standing on the property side, on the owner's side, how, how, from the top of the fence or the top of the guardrail to the driveway pavement, was that height?
Two and a half feet.
Three and a half feet from where you're standing, above ground. Then on the lower side, it's maximum fifteen foot.
Okay.
So, just, so doing the simple, the simple math, fifteen feet plus three and a half feet, it'd be eighteen feet high to the top of the fence?
Yep. But I'm assuming you have to do that because of the, the lay, the grade of the property and?
Yeah, yeah, the, the topography, I mean, currently the.
Just, just for the record, could we have, if a speaker, could they speak at the podium for the record, please?
Mr. Carey, would you mind coming up here and just explaining your, your relationship to the applicant and your professional expertise?
I'm the applicant, and it's my parents' residence. I'm a licensed structural engineer, licensed civil engineer, so I'll do the grading design, I'll do the structural design, licensed in the state of California. Basically, there's thirty feet of fall across the property. So in order to get a building pad, you have to have retaining walls, there's no other way. Okay? So if you put fifteen feet, you go with a natural grade where we establish a lower elevation on the house pad. Basically, we're using that lower pad, it necessitates a fifteen-foot retaining wall. But that's at its highest point, and tapers to zero, kinda real quick on each side, so.
I think y'all have done a remarkable job from the time that we started this back some time ago with CDC, and, and the revisions that you've made, redesigns and so forth, I think you've done a remarkable job.
We've been working hard, thank you. I, we spent, we started looking at the property April of last year. We closed escrow in August of last year, so we spent a lot of time at the city, working with Ray and Bill Terran and Akram, city engineer. So we tried to get the lay of the land, what's, you know, required for height with everything. And then we spent another four months after we closed escrow to kinda develop a package that submitted, so, you know, I think we have something that's rock solid. We're, we're trying to have a win-win for the neighbors, you know. Basically, we are asking for a little less on one side, but we are giving more than what's asking, you know, as far as the side yard setback on the other side. So basically, it's, the house is within the size allowable, which is shifting, the height, we're, we're a little more than five feet below the maximum, a thirty-foot above-average grade height. So we're, we're trying to keep it appealing.
Now, from, from, if I'm standing on the road and looking straight into your house, how many stories or how much is above ground?
Okay, it's gonna appear as a single-story residence, but, you know, Mesa falls pretty quick, so at the upper end, it's about ten feet above grade, at the lower end, it's about twenty-two and a half feet above grade. So that's how steep the, the road drops, but.
Above finished grade?
Yeah, road grade, finished grade.
So the, the total height of the fill is gonna, you're proposing, this is, the retaining wall is not to retain a natural slope, it's to retain a large fill, correct?
No, the, the retaining wall is basically to create a path to the under space of the garage for the turnaround.
Yes.
Then the house itself is kinda notched into the hill, if you can imagine that. The house, the, the finished floor is about the midpoint elevation between the upper end of the street and the lower end, and so my father will be able to use his wheelchair and go straight out the door to the street. That was another challenge that we had, this house is totally accessible. My dad is, you know, confined to a wheelchair, so.
Yeah. Let me repeat my question. Looking at the, the drawing from the driveway to the top of the fill, the top of the retaining wall, which I presume is gonna be retaining fill, correct?
The, from the driveway to the top of the, okay, depends on where you're at in the driveway. If you're at the street, the house is level, I'm not sure where you're.
Okay. So you're gonna be retaining fifteen feet of fill, and then there's gonna be a twenty, how tall house on top of that?
The retaining wall's in the back of the property, not, you're talking about the front, sorry. I'm so sorry. Can you? There's a, from Mesa Drive, I'm the architect, from the Mesa Drive, there's a driveway that comes down. So that retaining wall is not, you won't see it from the street. It's, it's going down, and it's towards the back of the lot. So the way we've designed this house is, no garage doors in the front. You go down a driveway, and the garage doors are in the back, facing, so what they have is, you won't even see the garage doors, basically. So all we're doing is we're creating, with that retaining wall, we're creating a pad that we can build a house on, but it's not something you see from Mesa Drive. You'd have to go behind the house to see it.
Question?
Does that make sense?
Our questions. Full disclosure, I've met with both the Baileys and the Carries and their representatives. Wanted to find out, if I can, this block wall, which sounds like perhaps the biggest bone of contention here, have you had an opportunity to discuss this with the Bailey family since we, since we met, as I encouraged you?
Well, I, basically, we've made several attempts, and I, I understand there's a lot of family health issues going on, so.
Correct.
It's, you know, we haven't been able to come together.
Okay.
We have met with Mr. Savala, I think he's satisfied with everything we went through, and we made some changes.
Okay.
You know, as far as the subsequent, what you see now. And so, you know, but to answer your question, no, with the Baileys, we haven't had the opportunity to meet with them.
Okay, and this is a question for staff. And staff, do we still have opposition from the Baileys on this, on this project? Mrs. Bailey is nodding her head yes. Okay.
Yes, they're, the Baileys still do have some outstanding concerns about the project.
Are there any other opponents?
Not that I know of.
Oh, yeah.
I live next door to the Baileys, and I share concerns, and it sounds like they're taking steps to crush things, but.
Could you? Yeah, could, could you come to the, the podium and introduce yourself, sir?
My name is James Warman. I live next door to the Baileys, one house over from the project. And we were asked to have a conversation, but we were asked to go early on a Saturday morning to the, the family's office in Orange, and I asked, could we get a copy of the plans? Could we talk about this over the phone? Could you send me an email? Could we meet at the property to, you know, see it in place? And I was told, no, 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 it has to be done at our office, we want to give you a presentation here. And so, it's, it's not, it, actually, I've had two conversations to that exact point. And so, it's not that I'm absolutely against the project, just I haven't seen anything or been able to see anything, and it has to be done on their terms.
Does, does this, this construction property, does this affect you from a line of sight or anything? I mean, are you on the other side of the basement?
I, I live immediately east of the Baileys, and looking over their yard, I would see the back of this yard. And currently, it's a garden, so I, so again, it's not that I'm here to try to squelch it, but I've got some concerns based on, especially in the initial design, and we have asked, suggested that, that visualizing this would be much easier if there was something on site to indicate.
Like an artist rendering or story polls or something like that?
Well, story polls, anything. And.
I believe that's one of the suggestions I made to the Carries when they visited, story polls might be.
Yes. It would clear it up, because outside of context, away from the property, there's no way to understand how these things are, are going to impact us visually. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, and we, all of us in council received a letter from Mrs. Carey, and she did ask for story polls as well, so apparently she listened to your suggestion.
Mrs. Bailey.
Mrs. Bailey, I'm sorry. And I also got a call from, this letter mentions that her husband. And I also got a call from, this letter mentions that her husband is ill and I received a call from Mrs. Bailey, I think it was yesterday, and she mentioned that Don is now in hospice and things are not looking good. And she asked for a continuance so that she can, you know, more effectively represent herself and her family's interest in this matter. And I think that, you know, since she's impacted and she's one of our residents, we should respect that request. Yes, she is.
Okay, so.
Are you...
Mrs. Bailey, would you like to speak about this?
...tonight, but, and I wrote a letter to the council. I'm Marilyn Bailey, at 1-885-2-MESA-DRIVE. You know, I'd like to have the Carries as neighbors. The only concern I have is we need to know how high everything is going to be. And one of the things I've asked for is a color sketch to give the left side of the house to scale to better exemplify my request. The other is place story polls on the property so we can see exactly where the heights are for everything. The other one is we'd like to see a copy of the proposed exterior lighting on the plan so that I can see how it affects our property. Now, the thing is, the variance is for fifteen feet, but it's actually going to be eighteen and a half feet. And that's a wall I'm going to have to look at, which I don't think, you know, I have to see something, a story poll, so I can see exactly what's going on because I don't think it's fair to ask you to approve something that residents are not aware of. May I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
With all due respect, do you really think a story poll is going to change your opinion? I don't know. I walked the property and it's beautiful to look at now, I agree, because it's wildflowers and... But I do believe the Carries, in my personal opinion, have been very accommodating in changing from the initial to now. I honestly don't think any height of wall is going to, is going to... That's what I'm going to look at, at my kitchen window. Well... Backyard.
All right, any further comments? Ma'am, have you submitted a card or would you like to come to the podium?
My name is Jasmine. I just moved to Villa Park for thirteen months. My house, I'm living on 1-8677, so my funda directly up the house they're going to build. I didn't know where that, they built a new home. I'm so sorry, maybe I missed the letter and anything until Robert confirmed me. And last me, last month, after the hearing, I had a family emergency. I rushed in overseas. That's why I didn't have a chance to call the CD. As you told me, you just said, the beautiful view, but the property listed more than twelve months. Nobody wanted to buy it.
The property listed where?
At that, the real estate market, the house listed only thirty days, it sells. So I think when he built his house, the view will be blocked. My property will be lose at least fifty percent of the value. That's the only thing I really worry. That's why I always talk to basically about the height. We really concern the height. Because it's the height, it blocked all the view and my house affect directly.
There's always a...
Excuse me, one second. Ray, can you address that issue? Do we have any ordinances that protect views of residences?
Currently, our zoning ordinance or any part of the municipal code is absent. When it comes to view corridors like some other cities, beach cities and so forth, we don't have a view corridor ordinance in place at this time.
Thank you. Has it been past practice for staff to have residents either by drawing or perhaps even as extreme as a story poll, indicate where something might be so that there's a visual representation, so that everybody can have an idea of what it looks like?
Not since I've been here, sir.
Okay, not even a sketch?
Yeah, I mean, there's conceptual renderings. You know, there's homes, brand-new homes that staff has worked on since I've been here. And usually, the property owner is good to their fellow neighbors and they share their plans as far as, you know, how it's going to lay out, how tall it's going to be. There's one that's also on Mesa that's been actively involved in involving the property owners on adjacent properties, saying, hey, this is what it's going to look like, you know, you can weigh in on the design and the elevation and so forth. So that's been my experience.
Thank you. Sir?
So I know we've seen several copies of the plans as they've come through, as they've been submitted and we've seen renderings that, which looked fantastic to me. I really appreciate the detail and the appearance, what they've been going for. I'm wondering if that's what's been missing, is that not been, is that not available to others to view or... Sorry, I see a hand in the back.
Sir, if you'd come to the podium and...
I'm Stephen Bailey, I'm Marilyn and Don's son, here to take care of my father while he's going through what he's going through. And I, you know, I'm, my other half is an attorney for people with disabilities, so I totally respect the Carries' point of view too. There's been a lot of conversation about, you know, what you can and can't do with that lot. And I'm also a builder. My dad's a builder. I grew up in construction. We've built a lot of stuff. My partner and I built fifteen homes together and commercial properties, so I have a pretty good knowledge of how things work. To say that that lot can only be built that way is not true. You could put the garage at the street level and you could make the living level downstairs and use an elevator like what they have now, so there are other options. Not that that's the only one I'm saying that they should do. I think what they're proposing is a good concept, but if you're going to ask for something that's three times the limit of what is normally used, the city has rules for a reason. You're going to impact other owners by allowing a favor to a new owner. I think there should be something to mitigate the issue. If the wall's going to be twenty feet tall, then maybe they need to plant ficus or something in front of it so that you see something other than a wall that's three times its legal limit. There should be something that can be done so that it doesn't impact so negatively one neighbor to benefit another. That's my suggestion.
Thank you for your comments.
Can I ask Ray a question? So right now, if I'm on Mesa and I'm looking, based on my understanding of the renderings, if I'm on Mesa and I'm looking at the house, I see a one-story house, correct?
That's correct.
That's what I see. If they wanted to, they could build a two-story house and stay within code. So I could be standing on Mesa and see a big, huge two-story house, but they are electing to make it look like a one-story, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Ma'am, you wanted to speak?
Yes.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Carol Carey. My husband Joe and I designed, built and currently live at 1-8511 Villa Drive. We have two children that also live in Villa Park and my grandchildren have all gone to Villa Park schools. We have a fair amount of experience building in the city, not to mention our forty-three-plus years as a building contractor. I also have an A engineering license and a C-16 flower sprinkler license. We love our current home, but because of our increasing age and disabilities, we've been looking for a property on which to build a house that would accommodate our changing needs. We purchased the hillside lot at 1-8672 Mesa after checking with the city on the viability of building on it and what the front, back and side yard setbacks should be and what the street requirements were. We have substantial experience with hillside developments. We plan to use our engineering and construction expertise to accomplish a beautiful development for the community. Our architect did a very good job designing a home that is ADA accessible. After the CDC meeting last month, we revised our plans in consideration of the comments that were shared. We are asking for the two, the conditional use permit for the two twelve-foot garage doors to accommodate our Sprinter van and that has been granted to other residents of the cities. The garage doors are not visible from the street or any other property, so really, you know, no one's going to see them. We are also asking for a setback variance on the west side of the property on which we live, on which we are going to build, from eight feet to ten feet. And I have letters of support from Cindy and Wade that live on that side of the property. They have no problem with it at all. Also with Daisy Lamb, the owner that has a driveway to the east and we look down over her property. The setback on the east side of the house will be seventeen feet, four inches, which is larger than what is, you know, is restricted to. There's very tall trees on both sides of the Lamb property, so I don't see how anyone's going to see over into the retaining wall because of these big giant trees anyway. We have reduced the square footage of the house to keep it under the lot restriction and the walls in the front have been moved back to behind the twenty-foot setback. The height of the proposed house is well within the city regulations. We are sensitive as to the fact that the view of the house across the street is going to be impaired. However, any house that is built on our lot would impede their view to some extent. There's no city restriction regarding blocking anyone's view, but we kept the house as a single-story above the street so as to be as unobtrusive as possible. Retaining walls are required for any house that is built on this property and would be about the height of the existing slopes. There's slopes there in the back now and that's where the retaining wall would be. There are many retaining walls in the city, including there's a very tall one on Sarah Villa Drive because we live over in that area. There'll be a three-and-a-half-foot guardrail on top of the retaining wall so that we don't drive over the edge, you know. The house is going to be beautifully landscaped by a company that has done Dodger Stadium and Ville Gates Home and many properties in Hawaii, so he's very expertise in what he does. A single-story above the street, beautifully landscaped and accommodating to our needs. We were very disappointed at the CDC meeting that some of the residents were so vehemently opposed to this house being built on the lot. No one ever contacted us before the meeting to express their concerns, although we left plans and our phone number at the four surrounding residences before Thanksgiving. And the CDC meeting was in mid-December. The property was on the market for some time and could have been purchased by anyone or any one of them to keep the lot in an undisturbed state. We were told that...
I hate to cut you off, but we kind of need to wrap it up, okay?
Okay. We've tried to contact, you know, the property owners and they were either town or they didn't want to meet with us, they didn't want to be put out. They didn't get back with us and I called them, you know, Mr. James Warman and, you know, he just didn't want to meet with me at all, so I said, okay, fine. I just hope that you guys will approve this project and expedite getting approval so we can get the house built before our needs change even worse, so.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mrs. Carey. What I hear is it sounds like the look of the retaining wall is a poignant issue for the Baileys, and again, well beyond the scope of our authority, but just as a polite, you know, FYI, would you be willing to work with the Baileys on what the landscape outside that wall would look like and maybe give them some input as to trees?
Yeah, we're going to, yeah, we're going to have, you know, this landscape architect and he's going to be landscaping the whole property, so, yeah, there's not a problem there.
I want to kind of bring this back full circle and wrap this up. I think we're kind of talking about things beyond our purview. What I'm concerned about, because I have seen the plans and they're beautiful plans, and I think the Carries have done a pretty, pretty nice job in revising these plans. I think the initial submission was frankly extreme. I think it was a reach by the architect, all due respect. But I think the revised version is much better. I think that the Bailey's concerns and the gentleman to my right of Mrs. Bailey, forgive me for not remembering your name, sir, I think those are some legitimate concerns as well, the fact that there's some unanswered questions. And I just wonder if it wouldn't behoove all to meaningfully get together on-site, not in somebody's office, but on-site, and take a look at things and see one last time, one last time, if you all can work through this and then bring this back next month so that there's no question whatsoever that any affected neighbor has been notified, understands what's going on, what the height of the proposed wall is. And with all due respect to the other concern about the height of the building, we don't have protected views. But when somebody asks for a variance that does encroach upon a neighbor, there are other considerations. And if there are mitigation measures that can be taken such as Councilwoman Miles suggested, screening, trees, those be discussed then. I would, I would support, and I don't know if other council members have any thoughts on this, but a continuance till next month.
I would also support a continuance. We have a family health emergency in process amongst other things. I know I've looked at the plans, I've only seen two plans. You said you've seen more than two plans?
Two.
Okay, I've only, yeah, I've only seen two plans. The plan that I received last week, the more I, the more I see it, the more questions I have. And certainly, looking at the staff report, there's still, in the proposed resolution, there's still references to approving a ninety-five-hundred-square-foot building. I think we need to go back and take a look at our proposed resolution and so forth and get our house in order as well, and that'll give us some time to do that. I'd also like to, you know, Mr. Bailey just pointed out that there's, you know, what if, couldn't you put the garage in the front? And let me finish my question. The, I've walked and I've gone up and down Mesa several times and all the garages are in the front. They all deal with the same slope that you're dealing with. And in fact, the Bailey's house, I've been over there, that they're dealing with the same slope issue that you're dealing with. And they put the garages, like most people do, in on significant slope areas up near the street, so you drive down into the garage where it's most accessible. Now, you're proposing a substantial elevator to get your, Mr. Carey, from the garage up to the living area. Couldn't the same elevator be used to bring Mr. Carey down from a higher-level garage down to a lower living area with, and eliminate the need for a driveway? And that's the biggest obstacle right now, it appears.
I, councilman, with all respect, I think we need to move this item along and make a decision, either to continue it, to vote on it one way or the other. And I don't think we're in the business of playing architect, no disrespect intended, sir, because I know you're very, very bright and very gifted at understanding these things. But I think we need to move this along.
I don't think a continuance is going to change anybody's mind.
Well, I respectfully disagree. We heard from a resident for the first time, and I've met with both camps, so to speak. And this is the first time I've heard this gentleman say anything, so I'm concerned. And I'm not calling into question the Carries in any way, shape or form. I view them as totally above board. I view this gentleman as totally above board as well. But where there is doubt, there is no doubt. And this gentleman is raising concern that he hasn't seen what's going on. I have concerns about that and I think that we owe it to him to have this matter looked at. And then they can, one way or the other, next month, we make a decision.
We've continued it several times already.
I think we owe it.
We continued it at the CDC.
Yes, to the council meeting and then council meeting, we continued it again to this one. So that's two continuations and you're asking for a third one. There's been ample time for the members of the community to meet with each other, to square. Matter of fact, the direction that we gave from the CDC was for all of them to get together and talk about it and discuss it. These people have gone out of their way to completely redesign everything to accommodate these folks and also our regulations, so.
I'm well aware of that, but they're asking for something outside of the regulations, so.
They were asking for that before.
So I understand that, so I guess my bone of contention is to make sure that there's fair notice given and this gentleman's stating that there wasn't.
Two and a half, three of those were.
If I may?
Sure.
I also am of the opinion that conversation has gone on kind of long enough and that there doesn't seem to be a resolution that is going to be reached by the parties that are involved and that all we can do as a council is vote on the variance that's been proposed to us and let them sort out what's going on from there. I feel like we're kind of overstepping our bounds to go further. I feel like we're kind of overstepping our bounds to go further than that at this point.
Well, we heard this at the CDC on the 17th of December and continued it the next, to the next CDC meeting, which was in January. The CDC meeting in January, which this was scheduled to be heard, was canceled, and now we're hearing it today. So I don't know that there have been a series of continuances. We've not acted on it all. But I think it's fair to give the adjacent residents an opportunity to see, you know, how big is this breadbox we're looking at? We can talk about, okay, it's going to be 50 feet high, or it's going to be 30 feet high, whatever. What are we talking about? What does it look like? I think that's a fair request from residents that are going to have to look at this project in perpetuity. You know, having sat on the CDC committees since elected in 2016, typically, we, you know, we look for consensus from all the adjacent property owners. And, you know, where we've had one property owner that is not pleased, we ask the applicant to come back with, you know, with something that is acceptable to the adjacent property owners. Now, let's give them a chance to take a look, talk it out, see if they can come up with something.
All right.
No.
We've already had enough discussion on this. No disrespect, Mrs. Bailey, we know your point of view, and we know your son's point of view, and we've heard everybody. I think I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the question and-
I have not cooperated with the Cari's in the last 30 days.
I understand, ma'am.
I understand, we're sorry.
I understand, ma'am, believe me, I understand.
Very stressful time.
That's why I met with you personally, and why I've met with the Cari's personally, to see what I could do to make recommendations, and why I've tried to encourage council in a certain direction, so. All right, I'm calling the question.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as requested.
Second.
Second.
Clarification, that is, you are approving both CUP 2018-06 and variance 2018-03-
Correct.
For 18672 Mesa Drive.
Yes, indeed.
May I ask one more clarification? I know Councilwoman Mills had asked if there would be a condition added.
Miles.
Okay.
Apologize to Greg wherever he is. You know, about landscape approval for the view of the wall, if you wanted a condition added that would, to the satisfaction of the Community Development Director, some landscaping, a landscape plan added for appropriate screening of the wall, if you want.
My intent was just to kind of show a good faith effort to recognize the concerns of the Baileys, so that way, and I wouldn't want to look at a wall either. That was all, just a goodwill kind of.
Okay, so no request, okay.
The, I'd like to make a substitute motion to continue this item to the February meeting and request that story polls be posted indicating the height of the various features of the proposed project, and also to give staff time to revise their conditions of approval, which currently authorize up to a 9,629.80 square-foot residence, which, you know, I think that-
Is that in fact true, Ray?
I'm looking at the-
Thank you, thank you.
Conditions of approval, Resolution Number 2018-3442.
Steve.
Item number three.
I'm sorry, this is Resolution 2018-3442?
Yes. Conditions of approval. The overall building size of the single-family detached residence shall not exceed 55% of the lot size. Now, our zoning requirement is 38% of the lot size, and, which means 55% of the lot size is 9,629.80 square feet.
And it came in at 37, I thought, is what they said, 37 points, something.
That's what I'm saying, is there, you know.
There's a revised section.
We don't see a revised resolution.
I want to make sure, and I think the concern is understood. Do we have a-
Sorry, I don't see that on the resolution that I have.
I just pulled this off of the city website. This is condition-
So, Mr. City Attorney, if this were to go-
Did we miss it right here?
Yes, I want to speak with him real quick. If we were to approve this, then would we be approving that, the 9,000?
Well, I will turn, I will turn to the maker of the motion, and my understanding of the intent was that it would comport with the plans as being reviewed tonight, and inconsistencies in the conditions of approval would be changed to reflect that, so.
Right.
Yeah, that would be, that condition would definitely be changed.
That's the one we're talking about.
That's what my concern is.
You know, and just for the record, I do have that. It's condition number three, what Councilman Colacott's talking about.
I do too, I see that.
My, yeah, the condition I have reads, the height of the double-roll-up garage door shall not exceed 12 feet.
You're looking at, that's four.
You're looking at the other item.
Okay.
Looking at Exhibit A, conditions of approval.
You're looking at the variance, look at the CUP.
Yeah, I'm looking at the CUP, yeah.
So, condition number three?
Mm-hmm, yes.
All right, so, that's right, what were you saying, it says 55%?
No.
It doesn't make any reference to that.
No, he, he, okay. I don't know what.
Yeah.
Version that we've got here is for the record. Let's show it to the council.
Well, see, I see this.
Steve, should we take a five-minute recess if they can discuss this matter? Let's take a five-minute recess. If those of you who need use facilities or are here from an earlier item would like to leave, now would be a great time. We'll reconvene in five minutes.
Yeah, this one had-
Make sure our house is in order. All right, we're back in session. Todd, you want to comment on where we're at?
Yeah, so apparently the conditions from a previous iteration of the project were the ones posted on the website. Under the law, yeah, and if anybody wants a condition of the, a copy of the actual conditions, they're right up here if you want to grab them on the dice to look at them.
I just put a copy there.
So under the law, under the Brown Act, you're only required to, you know, post the address, and people come and express their opinions on the matter. You don't technically even have to have the conditions of approval. So the fact that they're being changed, conditions are changed at council meetings all the time, so it's still legal to go forward if the council so wishes to go forward tonight. That's proper. I did ask, though, for public disclosure, if Ray would go through the conditions, just so everybody knows what they are and we're clear for the record what everybody's voting on.
So we're talking about just the conditions of approval, the conditions of approval for conditional use permit, 2018-06?
Hopefully, yeah.
Yeah, because I think that was a matter that was brought up.
Correct.
And, you know, like Todd said, the, what was on the city's website was a previous set of conditions from the original set of plans. And those conditions of approval changed once the plans were revised. So what you have before you are the conditions of approval that now are applicable to the revised set of plans. And it does not include, I guess it would be condition number four from the previous set of conditions.
Three.
Three, my apology.
Anything further on this from the council, from the public? Okay, I heard a motion and a second.
Well, Bob made a motion to continue.
Started to, and you-
Yeah, I made a motion to continue this to February to allow the opportunity for story votes, polls to be posted, for the staff to correct all the associated paperwork, and also in consideration of the most impacted resident to get through her family medical tragedy and be able to more fully address this, her concerns with, regarding the project.
Thank you.
And we had a second, I believe the mayor had seconded.
No, I did not.
No, he did not second.
I don't think anything's going to change.
So substitute motion dies for lack of a second, so it goes back to the original motion, which I think was Councilman Zimmerman's, for approval of the conditions, the, of the both resolutions of the CUP and the variance, with the conditions updated for the current project, as Ray just talked about.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a fair statement of your motion?
Yes. All right, vote.
Vote.
This is, we're voting on the only motion.
That passes by a four-to-one vote with Councilman Colacott voting now.
Let's hope everybody's good neighbors. Next, we have the consent calendar. Now we will consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion, approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Councilmembers, are there any items you would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Before, just as a clarification, because of item, there are some interrelationships between item number 10, 12, 13, 14, and 15, with number 19 later on in the agenda. I would recommend that we pull those from the consent calendar and address those after we've addressed number 19 later in the agenda.
I concur.
So we would be dealing with items six, seven, eight, nine, and 11 as part of the consent calendar.
I'd like to have nine, Paul, please.
Ten minutes.
Just want to make a correction.
All right. Which item would we hear first, then?
Well, we should hear the, we should hear the motion for the balance of the consent calendar.
Can I have a motion for the balance?
I move that we approve the balance.
Second.
So we are approving six, seven, eight, and 11.
Okay, all right.
For clarification.
All right, please vote.
Now we'd hear number nine.
Okay.
Just a minor correction. Uh, just a minor correction, the, the minutes referred to me as mayor. It said, no, it actually said Mayor Rossini and Mayor Pitts, so.
And you want to change that?
Yeah. Just, you know. It's almost to the back.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll show you where it is.
But it's a, it's a, it's a good catch.
They just left off Mayor Pro-Town, that's all. I just wanted to make sure that. For later reference, I don't get blamed for some.
Oh, thanks.
Says a motion is, item number 17, a motion was made by. And I seconded it, is the mayor. Can we do that? Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, is not, now is it, uh, I'm all confused. What are the numbers again now that we've pulled?
It is item number 17.
Thank you. Okay. That's all.
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I'm, I move, we approve it based on the change.
As the mayor. Go ahead and vote.
I just too have one question. When we, when we make these changes. Do we see them? Will we see them to make sure the changes were made? Not to question you, but sometimes we get red lines for things and things like that, so.
Something like this, since you've approved the action with those changes, we would post it on the website. We would not typically hand you another copy. We certainly can do that.
Okay. I'm more, I was more concerned about red lines and things like that when we make these motions to change things.
Yes.
Okay. Ready? That's it.
All right, next item.
So since we're, we're going to kind of move on, I would suggest we move to item number 16. Item number 16.
Okay.
Item number 16 is the 2017-18 Conference Management Financial Report. Item on the, this year, 2017-18 caper with the Conference Management Financial Report. Caper for those policy wonks of the, it's basically a, a report on the accounting books that we've done. We have an outside firm that completed it and they look at our outside, they look at our reporting and our books to basically ensure that they comply with government accounting standards. They're balancing, they're after it, et cetera, and they, they're consistent with our files. So we did get those and we received a clean audit, if you will, with no significant findings of anything, which is a good, good thing. So in essence, we put this on the agenda as a receiving file so that the council's aware. And one of the strategic goals, if you recall, was that we get audits and be very transparent about it. So this is, this is a very positive type of report. And I would also like to indicate that 2017-18 was the year in which we transitioned our chief financial officer. So to be able to transition mid-year, if a chief financial officer come away with no errors or omissions or things like that, shows that we've got the right person in place to build the chief of our previous CFO. I want to compliment Frank and all the efforts that he's done there because that's a really good accomplishment. A clean audit is always a good thing to do, but being able to do it under duress, if you will.
Indeed.
Stephen filed no vote.
Frank, Frank does deserve a huge.
Well, I did get a little sleepy by the time I got to page 66, though.
All right, so nobody's here to talk about that receiving file, so received.
It will be posted on our website. We're going to, we're going to do so the public can see it again, be more transparent and try and get that posted. So you'll be seeing that as soon as we get that up.
All right, so next up, we have item number 17, appointment of the city treasurer. Can you repeat, read the staff report, Steve?
This is, the city typically appoints a treasurer, serve a two-year term. And the last time we've, we've filled it was Mr. Dennis Kuli. You recall, is the treasurer. His term expires June 27th, 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 2019, July 31st, actually. So in talking to him, Mr. Kuli submitted his resignation and indicated that he was willing to serve till successor's name, but did not want to basically get renewed another term or move forward in that capacity after some 20 years of service to the city. We had, in the, the council had discussions in a closed session, indicated they would like to move forward and get somebody in board. So I approached Mr. John Bogart, who is on our, on our treasure oversight board, or investment, investment advisory committee. And he has, his resume is what is attached, and he indicated that he'd be willing to serve as the treasurer. So at this point, trying to be consistent with the council direction to sort of move forward, let's get something moving. And Mr. Kuli has indicated he'd help transition any learning. This, you'll note that the resolution does not include a date specific. Typically, in the past, we have recruited for that, so I left the option open, what the council wants to do with respect to a longer-term either appointment or recruitment or whatever they want to do. So as part of the action, in adopting the resolution, I would recommend that we adopt a timeframe and say that this is for X amount of timeframe to, you know, and then how do you want to fill it on a longer-term basis or what do you want to do? Give us direction. So this was, we move forward in this in an expeditive manner to be consistent with the council's direction. New council coming on board, so with that, I'm recommending that John Bogart be appointed effective January 22nd for a definite term set forth by the council tonight.
Council members, do you have any questions?
Just a couple. Are we required to post this position and, and have bids for it or anything of that nature? I mean.
No, this is, this is at the discretion of the council and it is not required. Traditionally, it has had a recruitment, but it is a non, it is not require a, the, the council has the sole discretion and can appoint this at their, at their will.
Is it, is it your intent to do this for a long period of time or is it just temporary until you get the opportunity yourself to, to fully vet a, a treasurer?
Well, it, it's not my appointment, so that's why I sort of left it open so the council can do that. Mr., Mr. Bogart was kind enough to want to step forward and fill a gap and help us. And so I sort of want to take him up on his offer and see, does the council want to make that decision tonight? Or do they want to wait and say, let's come back in six months, evaluate, and possibly do a recruitment? I, I leave that up to you because it's your appointment, not mine.
What's your recommendation, though?
My recommendation is to appoint him at this point and to give him some, there is a learning curve. So if you're, say, do it three, four months or six, five, six months, he's going to learn the job and then you're doing a recruitment and I, I don't know the value. So I would give it long enough for the value to be transferred, the knowledge to be transferred from the previous treasurer forward. Otherwise, we've lost that. And so I would recommend at least a, a longer term, perhaps six months to a year at a minimum. And obviously, you can do what you want to do. I defer to you as a council.
Steve, I looked at his resume.
Yes.
His resume speaks loudly of marketing and sort of a, a little less in, in finance. I mean, are you comfortable that he, he's got the finance background? I know he's running his own company, I think.
Yes.
Based on what I saw there.
CEO of a company. And yes, he has sat on the treasure oversight board for the last, since 2017. I have had personal conversations and lunches with him and talked to him and, and been, been very impressed with his knowledge and expertise. And his participation in the investment advisory committee has been really, really, really good. And I think the chair of that was, with the oversight board was here. I think he left because of the hour, the late hour. But anyway, regardless, I, I've been impressed with his ability. But again, you know, to the extent that you want to make it a shorter term, then that gives you the ability to vet somebody on the job, you know, on the job training, if you want to do however you feel comfortable with.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Comments?
I'd like to make a motion that, you know, we've got a new council starting out.
We have a motion we need to hear from the public.
Oh, okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong. Anybody in the public to comment on this? No, okay, go ahead, sir.
Well, given that we now have a new council, maybe it'd be appropriate to have that treasurer position run concurrently with the next two years so that the new council that comes in in 2020 can revisit this and, you know, appoint a treasurer, you know, of their own desire, you know, liking.
Is he inclined to serve for a period of years?
I, I don't want to speak for him. He has a son in high school and he indicated that a long-term, 20-year commitment, as the previous treasurer had made, would not be in the cards. And he would not be willing to do so. Four years, he sort of cringed a little bit when I said, you know, how long is, you know, how long? And he didn't, we didn't really talk about what he'd be willing to do, so I.
I'm surprised he's not here tonight.
Um, I, I believe he had a business requirement tonight, I'm sorry.
I, I would like to suggest, you know, this is for discussion for the moment, but maybe we appoint him for six months and evaluate his, his longer stay based on input from the evaluation that you, you all provide, the investment advisory committee, and also you, Steve.
I'm concerned, no disrespect. I, I, I think that you, you raise some good points, but I think I'm kind of in between the two of you. Two years and six months, I think that maybe at least a year, so he kind of gets his feet wet, see if it's truly for him, see if he's truly for us.
Oh, no, I'm just saying evaluate him during that six-month period. You can extend it for however period of time you want, but I, I was just, I want marks, I would like marks of evaluation at, at given points in time.
Okay.
So that we can evaluate, come back to the council and say, you know, we've had him for six months now, he's done an excellent job, he's doing this, 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 and this. And then if we want to continue his employment, so to speak, if you will, then, then we continue it. That's, that's all I'm asking for, because I don't, I don't know the man. I really don't. And, and I don't know what he's capable or not capable of doing. And you're asking me to make a decision, a long-term decision about someone who I know nothing about.
Understood.
Just, just for clarification, I did not ask for any long-term commitment. I just asked for the appointment this evening. So as, for the record, secondly, it's a voluntary position. And Mr., and Mr. Bogart did not seek the position. I approached him for the record. So I think that's one of the things he wanted to be clear, that he's willing to serve the city. And when I asked him that he would see, he indicated he'd be willing. So if you want to appoint him for six months, I'm sure he'd be willing to serve for six months. And I'd be happy to report back at your, at your direction.
Can we appoint him for a year and then just say it's six months? We kind of check in and say, how are you doing?
You can, you can remove him at any time.
Okay.
Regardless. It's your appointments at will, so to say it's a two-year term, six-month term, 20-year term, you can, you can say, we rescind that and he's removed.
The only reason I bring it up is because we haven't had a chance to vet
Sure.
other qualified candidates that may exist in our community and things like that. We're, we're, we're making a quick decision here about somebody we, me personally, I know nothing about. So that's the only reason I bring it up. If we want to do a year or with a six-month evaluation, I'm fine with that.
I would be inclined to do that myself, so I'm going to go ahead and make that motion that we do it for one year. And then that should give council enough time to meet with him and discuss his views on things and where he's going. I, I've had the opportunity to meet him. He's very, very gifted, very bright man, and has, has done a tremendous amount for our community. But I think that your, your concern should be noted and given, you should be given the opportunity. And hopefully, the two of you can connect, so.
I second the motion.
Okay. All right, let's go ahead and vote.
That passes by a five zero vote.
Okay. Next item, 18. As my computer dies, bear with me here a minute.
18 is the city manager report.
Thank you.
And that is the, the, the regular report here is provided. A couple of things here. I received a, questions for, from the Councilman Miles, who indicated that she asked me if an item had been a previous council member's that was on the list, does that item get continued or what happens there? From my perspective, unless the council so directs me, otherwise, I continue working on items because I don't sort of remove them from the list because somebody's not there. Secondly, and I think this is probably even, even more important, is the governor released his budget. It's not, it's listed on here as item number 170. The governor released his budget on the 10th of January. And in that budget contained a lot of items that have signi, potentially significant impacts on local government. And we are, as you're familiar with, the gov, the way the process works, the governor releases his, his proposed budget in January. And then he comes out, there's a lot of negotiation that goes on, and then he submits a May revision in May. And that, the May revision. And then the negotiations really start in earnest. And in that time, between May and June, you get a budget negotiation. I'm not sure how much negotiation there will be because in the past, there's been sort of a balance, if you will, in Sacramento. But now the one party has over two-thirds majority, so they don't necessarily need to negotiate a lot. But they may need to negotiate with the governor, so we don't know what's real and what's sort of a trial balloon. I will give you some of the things that are being proposed out there is that it would be the inability to, for the city to have planning authority unless, say, for instance, housing was built on some, affordable housing or certain types of high-density housing was built on properties. So, you know, that, that's sort of the thing. And the other thing is that you'll, you saw a proposal that he, he submitted just the other day that said that he was going to release some money to build on state-owned property. We have some state-owned property, not very close to us in the San Antonio River, but it's, it's close. And there are some issues there. The other issue would be with respect to some reimbursements and some funding that would otherwise not be available to us, that would be withheld or diverted elsewhere if we didn't do or met some housing requirements. Because it's clear this governor places an emphasis on affordable housing and whatever, to whatever extent that's going to be defined as. Because as you know, there's a lot of levels of affordable housing. The, the budget is, is not anything even close to crystallizing. It is now just a very early process, but it's, I, I've talked to several about you. It's going to entail some efforts and probably all of you at some point are going to hear about it at the meetings you go to. And it's, you know, the active engagement's going to be, I'm not sure specifically that Villa Park's going to have a tremendous impact, but in, there's, there's power in numbers and if cities, league of cities, of the, you know, the various special districts, you know, the, the LAFCOs and those kinds of entities, the counties, et cetera, all start stepping up and having some uniform strategies or policies. I think you're going to see some, some potential listening up, going on up in Sacramento. It may even involve candidly some, some visits of a delegation up there or down here or whatever the case may be. I just bring this to your attention because we are at the start of the process. Much of what is in the governor's budget, in the past, sometimes it's been a trial balloon, just to see, you know, what kind of reaction to get. And then before you know it, it gains momentum or something, you know, more regular happens is that things are going to be in the May revision that we haven't seen yet. And that's sort of like, it lays low, it lays low and you sort of, here's what's in a diversionary tactic and next thing you know, they've got a majority built and all of a sudden, some actions are being taken. I heard just this morning that the governor was proposing potentially even the rebirth of the redevelopment process. I sit on a county overdevelopment, redevelopment oversight board. And that is a whole nother, his predecessor would never even, he vetoed that. If this governor's willing to do that, that changes the complexion. The way it would affect us is we could potentially lose some tax increment that could go elsewhere. You know, so there's, there's a lot, and there's a lot of stuff that's out there that we're just starting to hear. So I heard that this morning and I would encourage you, if you hear things, please share with me. But I think there's a lot more to come on this and I think your active diligence is sort of perking up in the ear when you hear something, let me know. I know some of you travel in here, different parts of the state. And, and when you hear that, please let me know because it is going to be a very different budget process than we've had in the past. And potentially, and to fight, quite candidly, we're in the minority. And the type of community that Villa Park is, is a low-density residential community, is not typically what this new governor has been talking about as far as moving forward. And potentially, some of the recourse would be removing some of the local planning authority or zoning authority to do that. So in other words, an outside entity could say that you can put something in there that we would otherwise not have. So I, I just bring that up to your attention and that's item number 170. But that's probably one of the more important items we could face over the next couple of years, candidly, as it, it shapes. So I just bring that to your attention.
Thank you very much for that report. If we could go back real quick, Mayor Pro-Tim Pitts raised concern that items 12, 13, 14, and 15 Pitts raised concern that items 12, 13, 14, and 15 were not discussed. Were those agreed upon by consent? Or were they individually polled? Or I just want to make sure that we have the record clear-
I had, I'd asked that those be pulled and discussed after item number 19.
Okay. So after 19-
After 19.
After number 19. Number 19 affects the organizational structure of our committees.
Thank you.
So before we make appointments to committees, I felt we should have that discussion.
Perfectly understood. Just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. All right. So thank you.
There's no vote required. This is just sort of an informative-
Any questions of Steve on this or other staff members?
Okay. Thank you very much for that. I think that's very wise, counsel on your part. And it will be interesting to see what the future holds for Villa Park as it pertains to what this governor, what this legislator try to do. We've seen numerous attacks on local communities and counties' rights to, in a sense, govern themselves. And I would hope that folks in Sacramento are respectful of our, of our rights to, to govern ourselves. I think we've, we've shown for over 50 years that we're quite capable of doing it and making good, sound decisions on behalf of our residents. Item number 19.
Item number 19, you'll recall, was a discussion that we had in December where they asked for, the council asked for an ad hoc committee to, and that was consisting of Mayor Rossini and Councilwoman Miles to discuss and come back and, and review the, the city council committee structure and appointments. So in the past, typically, everybody has submitted their, their preferences and those were published as part of this item. But candidly, since that item in December, only one council member submitted his preferences. So nothing is published here for purposes of clarification. But this item on page number two of three on the staff report, you'll see what the mayor took the input from that ad hoc committee and came back with the recommendations. There, I would also point out on this that it was the former Councilman Nelson, indicated to me, and he pointed out, and I went back and checked the files, last January 23rd, we did appoint Councilman Nelson at the time to a two-year appointment to the vector control district. That is a two-year commitment that is sort of binding, if you will, and it can only be removed with cause. It does not need, the member of, the representative of the vector control district by their bylaws does not require to be a sitting councilperson. So there is no cause, because he's no longer a councilperson, to remove him from the council, from the vector control district. But I would have to, for purposes of, of this item, I would suggest that we not address the vector control as part of this item because we took action last year. And I would recommend that we honor that commitment as far as it's a two-year binding commitment. So otherwise, this is a council item and I defer to the council for their votes and action.
Thank you. I just want to start off comments on this matter and then I'd like to hear from everybody. And it looks like we have one member of the public still left. It, it obviously is a difficult thing when you're looking at these council committees. There are different opinions on these. Some folks would have preferred to leave things at status quo. My opinion was a little different. I think there were some duplicative committee, committees. I think they shared some similar roles. I know that Councilman Pitts certainly agrees with me on that. There are other things that I think he differs from me on and I respect that. He was kind enough to defer to Councilwoman Miles. And she shared in the discussion on this and was, was quite involved in, in this decision-making, as was Steve Franks. He, Steve has the rare opportunity and perhaps burden at times of attending all of these meetings and having a, probably the, one of the most unique understandings of what's effective and what's not, what is helpful and what's not, what's getting things done and where we can tweak things to make our committee system and our, our city governance as efficient as possible. So with that, we put together a list, which is provided. And the only change that I would like to offer that's not indicated is the Investment Advisory Committee. I think that Councilwoman Miles, if she would be inclined to sit on that committee, especially in light of the fact that initially I had given the nod to her for vector control, if she would look at that. But getting back to the actual reorganization, Steve, I'd like to, if you could, kind of go over what some of the thought processes from the notes are that you have.
Well, I just worked my way down if you want to on this.
Please.
The top group, the Vector Control, Fire Authority, Sanitation District, Public Library Advisory Board, those are external bodies that we get one appointment to. We don't get an alternate. That's the way, where their bylaws work. So those are the appointments that are recommended by the mayor. The council committees are subcommittees of the council. Each of those had, is created by individual resolutions and they meet on a varying basis. The budget and finance, which is the first one, is, in the past, that's been the two, one of those has been always been in the Investment Advisory Committee. Those are the two individuals that typically sign the financial, the, the accounts payable documents that we have, you know, the warrants every, each month, basically.
So two council members will, if this-
Well, one of the things we need to do this evening as a result of, the thought would be you can handle this through the Investment Advisory, but the council tonight will just need to designate. For interest of, we had Councilman Nelson doing that. So, and Councilman Colacott had been signing them. He, both of them are on the previous list. At this point in time, we have not made any official change with the bank, but we are, we have, Councilman Colacott's been signing the accounts payable since Councilman Nelson has left. But tonight, I would ask that we specifically state who would be the two signatories on the farmers. And also it'll go, that'll go back to number 10 as well, the item on LEIF, which is the Local Agency Investment Fund, which is the state. So that would be the, the two individuals that basically would have signing authority for our financials.
For the record, I would like to have Councilman Zimmerman and myself on that unless there's any objections from the council on that. Okay, let's move on. Thank you.
The Community Development Council, the one change there was the development, the addition of an alternate. Otherwise, there was no change recommended. The Public Safety, Public Works and Engineering and Human Resources, you'll see the, the notes there that they, in the discussions, they believe that much of those were, the work was, I don't want to say duplicate, but close enough that it could be folded in or rolled within those other, within the Fire Authority, for instance, LIAC, or the Infrastructure Management, or the Human Resources issue. And this was my recommendation. I typically would rather deal with all five of you than two of you at once and then have to go back and deal with five later. So I think a Human Resources issue is, is really an issue for all of you to discuss. So that was sort of my recommendation. I'll stand by that one. Then there's the city council advisory committees. These are appointments done separately. Then these are citizen appointments that will be items number 12, 13, 14, and fif, and 12, 13, and 14. And that would be for the city schools, law enforcement, investment advisory, and infrastructure management. And I believe the mayor has already indicated that that would, they as well exist as is, with the exception of the mayor placing Councilwoman Miles in replacing him on the Investment Advisory Committee.
Concur.
The nonprofit liaisons, those, their bylaws require that there be either a, a primary appointment and, and an alternate. So for the Friends of Library and the Foundation, those are both so stated, recommended by the mayor. The other committees that we have are typically committees like SCAG, which is Southern California Association of Governments, where there's meetings in the adopt bylaws during the years. There's, probably meet a couple of times a year, I guess, at most. The League of Cities, there's at least one annual meeting where they have to vote and that's typically moved up and down the state. And then the bridges at Kramer where Council, Mayor Rossini had typically been in the past. So that's sort of the quick synopsis of what it is, what I understood the, the discussions and the mayor's recommendations to be.
Thank you. Any comments or thoughts on that amongst the council members?
Sure.
Okay.
I just wanted to comment. It looks like a lot of thought was put into this. And I know you guys had separate discussions to go through and identify. I just wanted to indicate that I respected the amount of time that you put into this and that I thought these were fairly well-thought-out choices. I, correct me if I'm wrong. Councilmember Pitts, you were on the library board before?
Yes.
I don't want to take anything from you necessarily. I, so I wanted to make sure-
Great idea.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't stepping on any toes or that this wasn't interfering at all. Great.
Real quick, the other item that I know that the mayor had discussed was, some of these meetings are quarterly, some of them are monthly, et cetera. So I think one of the recommendations or the guy, sort of a guideline, if you will, not a hard and fast, but specifically sort of like, they meet at a, they sort of self-regulate, but no more than once every other month.
Correct.
So, so that they would be like six meetings a year, unless there were emergency or certain circumstances prevented themselves that require something happening.
That should ease some of the burden upon staff and the number of hours, the 207 hours that was commented upon, plus the reduction in the committee size. That was the goal, is to try to streamline what we do, make sure we're not meeting just to meet, but at the same time, make sure that we have the business of the people handled and that everybody, everybody has a voice when they, when they should have it. Councilman, Councilwoman, Miles?
I have a question, or an observation, I guess. The CDC, if someone's applying for a variance or a CUP, they're going to meet with the council committee, which includes city staff, correct? And then the city staff will either say, yeah, we think that'll work, or no, we don't think that'll work. And then it comes to council, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Why do we need that additional step if it's going to come to council anyways? As evidenced with item number four, where it went to CDC, it went back, it came back to CDC, it came back. That was a lot of time spent by staff and it ended up coming to council anyways. So if we're talking about, in all fairness, trying to reduce the workload on our staff and how many hours and whatnot, can't we invest the trust in our, in our, our city staff that we hire? And then if Ray, they have to go to Ray anyways, why do we have to make it an official meeting?
I appreciate your concern. We did discuss this and came to a conclusion in the ad hoc, ad hoc committee, but I appreciate that. I saw an arm raised over here.
The CDC does, deals with a lot more than variances and can, you know, that sort of thing. We also deal with things like the, the Sully Miller development. You know, that's, you know, that's the group that would work with staff to develop comments on, on that. As our city manager pointed out, it looks like we've got a very activist regime going on in Sacramento. We've got a very activist governor and a democratic legislature that is going to be very supportive of what he needs or what he's proposing. We're going to be, on a planning front, we're going to be, you know, we may not be able to influence that legislation a lot. Maybe we can, you know, through our committee, have a couple of people, you know, a couple of our councilmen be thinking about, okay, how can we soften the blow on Villa Park? Maybe, you know, proposing things like, well, this doesn't apply to cities with a population of less than 6,500. You know, that's just, you know, pulling something out of the air. But finding ways for us to deal with what we anticipate to be some significant changes to state regulations affecting our city. So, and also, from my experience having been on the CDC since 2014, it really gives, the CDC is a less formal venue for people to work, for project proponents to work out issues. And we saw that even, you know, at our last meeting. Our actual last meeting of those projects, again, was on December 17th. The one in January was canceled. So, you know, it's not that we're hearing repeated, they're coming to repeated hearings on the same project. But it really does provide for an informal way to work out issues, get a project all packaged and ready to submit to city council for approval.
And just kind of on top of that, I think, you know, it's already nine o'clock now. And if there's no committee as a buffer to hear these initial concerns of residents and have them flushed out in a public venue, separate and apart from a city council, you're going to have these things come back before the city council three, four, or five times because you'll have different people come out of the woodwork. When you have the individual committees, and in this particular case, the CDC, a lot of that kind of heavy lifting is done at the committee level, when we actually attend our meetings, when we actually are able to meet and have staff kind of go over these things. And, and a lot of that misconception is drawn out. And I think that is something that really ought to be strongly considered. Otherwise, we're going to be here until 10, 11 o'clock at night in the very near future if we eliminate the CDC. That's just not something that is, with all respect, and I've, I've been on that committee too, something that I think we should do. You had-
I just wanted to comment on the proposal. I understand that you and Councilwoman Miles and our city manager worked on putting this together to various extents. And I think it's excellent. When I came on council for, in 2014, we had a Community Development and Public Safety Committee. And I quickly learned that that committee, you know, given the responsibilities, basically had, they were doing all the work for the city. And I, I felt that that was not right, that we needed to be able to spread the responsibilities for some of the subcommittee work out amongst the full council. I know I wanted to get, for example, Mr. Pitts, or Councilman Pitts involved, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim Pitts involved with the community development because, you know, you know, we need to have continuity in our, our representation on, and understanding of those issues. However, I think that what you've worked, what you guys have worked out is superior to what I proposed a year ago and I, I support it.
Thank you. Unless there's anybody from the public to speak on this and if, Rob, go ahead. Sure. I was going to come back to you. I know you had some comments.
That's okay. Steve, a couple of things. First of all, I commend you all on, you know, part of the reason we got to this point was because I kept bringing up that we were tying up staff for staff time and so forth. And I appreciate the fact that you all went through this process and, and eliminated potential hours of, of effort on, on the staff part. I do agree with Councilwoman Miles about, you know, trusting our city staff. I think, you know, we've got a great staff of people and I think we need to trust them to help us. But a few, a few points about this. I just have some concerns, mostly my, my personal concerns. First of all, the OC vector, it's my understanding from, and I got a little history lesson the last couple of days, but we've, we've made changes before without any consequences to the appointment. We did have previous council members that were on the vector control, but it was changed at some point in time and, and they did not serve their full term. So we've done it in the past. I don't know why we can't do it now. Go ahead.
I apologize. Yeah. So the one, vector control is a separate state agency under state law. And they had these two-year terms and like Steve was saying, they don't have to be council members. Because actually, I've talked to their general counsel and there's an attorney general opinion here too as well. Once you appoint him to that term, you, you can't kick him off. And God rest his soul, this came up with Jim Reins about 10 years ago. He was a council member and then he lost reelection, but he had been appointed as the vector control guy. And they said, Jim, step down. He's like, no, I like it. I'm going to stay. And they said, Todd, well, you got to tell him to leave. I go, I, I tried and I couldn't.
There was one other individual. It wasn't Jim Reins.
Yeah, okay. Well, you know, if people voluntarily step down, they can certainly do that, but I can't make them.
The, then, then if, if it's, the rules and the rules are that they do this, my, my point here is, he's serving at the pleasure of Villa Park. We appointed him to that two-year term. I expect a written report and I expect him to stand at that podium and deliver that report every month at our council meeting. That's not unfair.
Makes sense.
Nope, it's very reasonable.
As far as the community development, I agree with Councilwoman Miles. I'm not sure we need that. I, I understand where Councilman Colacott's coming from. But again, I've got a staff, we've got a, a city staff of people that have their pulse with consultants that we pay to keep an eye on things for us. And all we're going to do is send in a CDC- we pay to keep an eye on things for us. And all we're going to do is set in a CDC meeting sometimes and hear updates from consultants. I'm not full wasting the time, to be perfectly honest with you. If you all decide, if this council decides to keep the community development, I respectfully ask that I be removed from that committee, because I think it's a waste of my time. And then city schools, I've served on that committee before, and I appreciate your appointment for that, but maybe someone with kids ought to serve on that committee. I think they're better served. I mean, I made a lot of suggestions and things in the past when I sat on that committee, but it's been a while since my kids were in school. I'm not sure I'm giving a very up-to-date, you know, effort there. So I would, I would suggest that maybe someone else be appointed in my place there, because I think you yourself or, you know, there's three people sitting here at the diocese that have kids in local schools and stuff like that, might give a better, better opinion than me. Give a little better direction, especially with today's schools.
Well, I appreciate your comments, and I thank you for them all. I certainly only want what's best for Villa Park and...
And the other thing too, that, you know, these two-year commitments and, you know, Councilman Colacott's been on this OC sanitation. While I appreciate and applaud the fact that he's being, you know, promoted within the group, but we're not giving any of the rest of the council the opportunity and some of these other entities to learn, to give a different perspective, and to provide input and so forth. We're putting these people on these committees for long periods of time and not giving anybody else a chance to do it. So that's my only other comment about the vector control and sanitation district. I understand the fire authority because they asked for it, okay? But I'm not sure that the vector control, other than the fact that we're mandated to put somebody on there for two years, and we've got to be mindful of that with council changing, as far as I'm concerned. You know, before we make these future appointments for these two-year terms or whatever.
I mean, there was discussion at some point in time that, you know, when you appoint somebody to that, it should be somebody who has at least two years left on their term.
Exactly.
That is, I think those are some good points. I agree with some. Unfortunately, I disagree with others, but I appreciate and value your opinion. Some, in some situations, I think our hands are tied because of what had happened in the past, and that's what I'm hearing from our city attorney.
It's not tied with sanitation.
That's true. But at the same time, I think sanitation is a unique board, and I made my decision on that one, and I think that was discussed with Crystal's input. And given Councilmember Colacott's background professionally, educationally, and academically, I don't know anybody on this council that is more suited to that particular committee. Obviously, his colleagues, any of who I serve with and value their opinion on the Orange County Fire Authority Board, would not make a decision based upon any past prestige that is based upon the value of his input over time. And I respectfully disagree with you on that. But I think you've raised some great issues. I think you brought some of these ideas to fruition, and I thank you for your comments. Unless there's any comments from the public?
Actually, really great to hear Mayor Pro Tem Pitts' opinions on these things. So it highlighted some of the thoughts that I kind of had in the back of my mind that I wanted to talk a little bit more about. So I, the sanitation district, I think I expressed as I was running, something I'm very interested in, not to take away from Councilmember Colacott. Is this something that we're then thinking, is something that Mr. Colacott gets locked into for multiple years because he has extensive background? Or is that something that maybe we want to think about transitioning at some point? First of all, is this another of the two-year? No?
No. I think that's at the discretion of the mayor. That's been the past practice. Given his, in a sense, promotion within the ranks, his understanding of the subject matter, frankly, not something that I'm all that passionate about. I, but I do understand the value of it, because guess what? When you flush or turn on the water, and if it doesn't go somewhere, we have a problem. When there's a drought and we don't recycle our water, there's a problem. And he understands that from many, many different aspects. Sequo to consulting, to his education, he's well-versed in that. But, you know, that's up to whoever's mayor next year. So I can't speak for next year, I can only speak for this year. My candid opinion is I think he's best suited for that particular position. At the same time, I recognize the value of certainly everybody's intellect. Everybody on this council is extremely bright. And I've tried to divide up the responsibilities, where I saw strengths, where I saw expertise, where I saw education, and frankly, where I saw desire. If I miss the mark, then I apologize for that, but I tried to, and I didn't do it in a vacuum. Independent of the ad hoc committee, well before the election, I tried to reach out to each one of you and kind of get an idea of what you were thinking about, where you wanted to go. And the vector control obviously was a curveball. Tried to do what we could with that and make sure that Councilwoman Miles is represented well, and her opinions are out there in the community. And I think the committees that she's assigned to, she'll make a big impact, and they will make a big impact on her. So that's all I have to say on that.
Okay. So I had two other things, real quick. I'll try to be fast. So on the OC vector control, I think it's worth at least asking to have, to replace, to see if we can, see if that's something that possibly Mr. Nelson would be interested in letting a council member take that position.
He contacted me this morning and indicated he wanted to be, continue his service.
Well, that's fantastic. I appreciate that he wants to, but I would want to ask if he would be willing to step aside in favor of a council member who's also interested that, given that we just had a change in the council makeup. So I think it's worth asking at least. And then I guess when it comes to the community development one, I'd like to suggest that as we're looking at eliminating stuff, this, when, I know when Mayor Pro Tem put, Pitts put up the numbers for the time that we were saving, the other three, the human resources, public works, engineering, budget, and finance, they didn't save us very much on that 207. They were very small eliminations. But the CDC, what would have been a vast improvement on the usage of our city time by removing that? And to me, that seems like a big win. That's the big win, is getting rid of that.
Truthfully, the biggest win is cutting the committee, how many times they meet, the infrastructure management committee, in half. That is a massive savings. And that is something that I think the committee supports, I think our city manager supports. I certainly think that the CDC hasn't met that much because there have been a lot of cancellations. So I don't think there is a huge issue necessarily with staff on that. And candidly, they do a tremendous amount of work. There's a lot of stuff that goes through that committee that does need council input at a lower level than the full council, and good ideas are shared with our staff and consultants. And we're able to, like I said, do some of the heavy lifting there so that we're not at council till 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night, which other cities are, usually because they don't have the kind of volunteers that we have, or they're just frankly not as efficient, excuse me, not as efficient. But I think it would be a huge mistake. That's something that we discussed in the ad hoc committee. It's a surprise to me that at this point in time, especially in light of the evidence presented, that we would change that. I think with time, no disrespect intended, that you will see the benefits of having that committee and preventing lengthy agenda items, like the one involving the Carrys and the Baileys earlier, a lot of that is flushed out. I think that, I think that would be helpful if we keep that.
I think we caused more stall than they did.
Can I ask city staff a question regarding the CDC? Steve, what kind of impact do you think there would be if we didn't have CDC? What kind of impact do you think it would be to city staff and city council?
I feel like a kid at a table when your parents are fighting.
We're not fighting.
I fight it.
With all due respect, I'm just trying to lighten it up a little bit. You know, I mean, anytime I have an opportunity, or staff have an opportunity to interact with council members, it is a value. All right? So I will take that. From an applicant standpoint, I'll be real candid, it's one less step an applicant would have to worry about. That doesn't mean it's a good thing or a bad thing. Maybe it's a bad thing, they don't get vetted. I don't want to assign value. Maybe it's a good thing, they, from their perspective, it's faster. What would it mean from staff perspective is probably the best thing, is that there's a time commitment. We prepare and we do the work for that. Now, keep in mind, we're going to prepare and do the work for a council meeting as well. So Ray doesn't get to do any less staff report because it comes to full committee. And in fact, the CDC doesn't have authority to approve anything without the full council authority. So it is a chance to vet those ideas, I think has been suggested by the mayor, and how successful that vetting is. I mean, it can be very successful on some issues. It can be, I don't think a whole lot was resolved before it got here tonight, but...
But can I?
Depends on the involvement.
Yeah, it depends on the issue, and it depends on the nature of the residents and things like that.
But if they don't like the answer, they have the full right to come to the council at next meeting.
Yes, they do.
But can I ask that your word, you know, the vetting process?
Yeah.
Regardless if there's two council, three council, four council on the CDC, the only one that truly vets is that, is Ray, right?
Right. But sometimes what I mean vetting is the applicant and staff can hear for the first time what council might be thinking, or get a sense of what the council, they might be receiving when they get to council. That's what I mean vets. So sometimes that's an opportunity to hear something from that perspective. Now, is that universally true? I don't, I can't say. It's a case-by-case basis. But what I meant by vet was, if a council member would look at something, and we typically, Ray will work on projects. Sometimes I don't even see the projects until they come to CDC or whatever. So it's a first chance for them to sort of like float them and see, it's like, oh, this one's not going to fly after you start talking to some of the council members. That's what I meant by vetting.
Well...
The applicant has the right, like Mayor Pro Tem Pitts, at any time, if he doesn't like it, we advise him, go forward. You have the right to go to the full council as they, as to vote. In fact, to get a decision, you have to go to the full council anyway.
But to cancel it, you don't have to. And if you're hitting, if you're hitting a brick wall at the CDC, if you're hitting a brick wall with staff, then you kind of have your answer.
Well, they've already hit the brick wall. Assuming they'll hit the brick wall before they get to the CDC with the staff.
Well, we would hope, but that frankly has not been the case.
So if Mayor Pro Tem Pitts is still not wanting to be part of the CDC...
I don't think it's necessary, so I don't even...
Then I would opt to volunteer for that. And honestly, so that I can evaluate for myself and see for myself if I really truly feel like it's an added value to the city to have.
I'm inclined to make the change in accordance with her wishes.
And I'd be pleased to work with you. I'm the other person identified on that committee. There is a lot to planning, and there's a lot for us as a council to know about planning beyond what staff knows. Now, staff is pretty much, pretty busy with dealing with the variances and conditionally used permits, you know, the routine stuff, but not so much the big-picture stuff.
Well, and if I'm approved for this, then I will get to see that firsthand.
For example, and I suspect over the next three, four years, we're going to be seeing a lot of work coming down the CDC's.
I look forward to it.
Because there's, you know, in the past, what we've dealt with was we've, the council members on the CDC have initiated changes to our variance or to our zoning code, for example, for E4 lots that were less than 20,000 square feet and above 17,000. Then we more recently cleaned up the ones less than 17,000. We've done, we also addressed the housing unit, or the housing element. We've got the housing element coming up again in a couple of years.
Well, thankfully, it sounds like we've got some good volunteers that are willing to step up on that.
I just want to make sure too, that this list doesn't grow for needless projects that take us away from our priorities in the city. That's the other problem.
So it sounds like we have a change requested for city schools advisory. I would be honored if Councilman Zimmerman would chair that, or be on that committee.
I'm happy to serve. I'm interested in pretty much all of the committees, so I'd want to limit my time in terms of what I'm committing to.
Right. And that's why I divided it up the way I did. And it sounds like, correct me if I'm wrong, Councilwoman Miles will take the seat for community development, public safety.
Can we still get an alternate, though? Because I think an alternate is important if somebody...
I'd be happy to be an alternate.
Perfect. That way, we're not inconveniencing residents if one of us can't.
Yeah. Is that, are we on the same page here? All right. Anyone from the public on this? Last call. All right. I'd like to call the question. I'm going to make a motion that with those changes, which hopefully Todd is taking good notes on.
I can just walk through, the removal of the vector control, removal of, from the CDC of...
But he wanted...
Would we like to keep that, or no? You still want to...
With the direction to go to approach, but at this time, not addressing any change, but going to approach him to see if he'd be willing to.
Right.
I think that was the instruction I received. Then the community development CDC would be to remove Mayor Pro Tem Pitts and put Councilwoman Miles as the secondary, and the alternate would be in the Mayor Rossini. Then for city schools, to remove Mayor Pro Tem Pitts and add Councilman Zimmerman. For the investment advisory, to remove Mayor Rossini and add Councilwoman Miles. I believe I've got everything that we've talked about.
I think so.
So that would be the motion.
That would be the motion, so moved.
With, secondarily, that those appointments are made, the reconfiguration is made, we will have to come back with amendments to enabling resolutions because they're all established by resolutions. So that's an administrative function. We have to follow up, and, you know, each one of these has to be, the resolutions have to be undone. But we can do that. That's, we've done that before, we'll do that. And then also, the guideline regarding the number of meetings would be incorporated.
And Mr. Nelson comes here every month and reports on his activities.
His monthly vector control reports?
Yep.
That's assuming after we approach him, that he doesn't voluntarily step aside.
He's not going to give it up. He's not going to give it up.
My instructions, to approach him, I guess is what.
I know. Please. Financially, he doesn't want to give it up, and otherwise.
All right. We have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second.
Okay. Please vote.
That passes by a five-zero vote.
Thank you.
So now we go back to item number 10. Number 10 was the LEAF investment fund, and as you recall, we appointed, you made it clear that Mayor Rossini and Councilman Zimmerman would be the signing authority. So that would be consistent with the resolution that we had drawn out here at this point. So they would be the two, that would be it. So we would be as is. So I would recommend, if you so inclined, to approve resolution 2019-3445.
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
Do you want to, we can...
No, that's okay.
Do you want to record a vote, or no?
No.
Do you voice vote?
I don't want to record a vote.
Okay. You're blinking.
I'm concerned about making sure that we are looking at our budgets and all those kinds of things, where we're making expenditures and so forth. It's within the guidelines of the budget. We're just not signing off on checks, that's all. And I think that's what the Budget and Finance Committee was doing. It's what you were doing at one time, I think, was to ensure that we weren't...
I don't think I've ever in my life just signed a check, Robbie.
Okay, just, I'm just bringing it up. No, no, no. I said, that's what you were doing.
Just for record.
Checking the budget and making sure that the...
I just want to make sure, because...
You misinterpreted what I was saying.
Believe me. And one of the reasons why I think it's important to have a non-signer on the IAC is you have somebody that is looking over it, but also not signing on it. So there's kind of some...
There's no conflict of interest.
Yeah, there's no conflict of interest, and there is ample oversight. So thank you for your comments.
I apologize. I missed the comment originally. Did you want to be the other signer? Was that the...
No, 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 no. I just want to make sure that we are not just signing off on things that we're looking at the budgets. We're looking at all the pertinent data before we make a decision about signing something. That's all.
Okay.
And I think that's what the Budget and Finance Committee did before, is they evaluated things, and they took the budget and everything else into consideration.
One of the changes that recently came into effect when Steve came on is the fact that we have these budget planning meetings where... that we have these budget planning meetings where we go over the raw numbers. And those are extensive and there are at least two that I recall. So a lot of that is done right there. So having the Budget and Finance Committee, as you may recall, and I know you had to travel on one of them, is, the budget planning sessions are duplicative. So I appreciate your concern, I appreciate your comments, and I think that having the multiple signers, having the investment advisory, the smartest financial people in our city that volunteer for this, taking a look at what we're doing, having our finance director who can't sign on anything, I think we're in good shape. But thank you.
So who's going to attend the budget meetings?
It's...
All of us.
All of us. All of us.
We do basically a single purpose workshop.
Okay.
So for signing purposes, it's chat, not...
Chad, you, okay.
And those have already, I think invitations for those have already been sent out, or invites. The dates have been set, I think I sent out invites.
Yes.
And that's the only thing on those agendas is the budget. We spend however long you guys want to talk about, assumptions, preferences, expenditures, everything, revenues.
I'm getting an invite.
All right. So then, now we would move into item number 12, which would be the Investment Advisory Committee. This is, the reason we held on this is not because of the committee itself at this point, it's this, this is the appointment of Bill Underwood and Harold Hewitt to the advisory. They both have served on it, but this is, they've got two-year terms that are expiring, so this would be reappointing them. So item number 12 would be the reappointment of Bill Underwood and Harold Hewitt. And I would just, for clarification, Bill Underwood was just voted Chair of that committee by the committee last week.
We could be more, yeah, we couldn't be more blessed to have two people second. Any members of the public want to comment? I don't think so.
Number 13 is the invest, I mean, sorry, the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee appointments. These are again, the public appointments that expire. And we had one member step off and that was...
John Whitman.
John Whitman. So Richard Murg, Ruben Navara and Tom Dodge would be reappointed with this action.
So moved.
Second.
That passes by a vote. Item number 14, this is a little more complicated unfortunately, is the Villa Park Community Services Foundation appointments. What we are doing here is, you'll recall, all the terms expired at one time. So by action, we talked to the foundation and those, the more senior members will get one-year terms because they may or may not want to stay on it. And then the more newer directors probably who are still as, were interested in doing two-year terms. So the committee sort of, after discussing it, sort of came to the discussion. So the terms are so stated, the two-year service would be Rich Omer and Joe Kuli, would be one-year terms, I'm sorry. And the four directors that would have a two-year term would be Ed Carter, Bridget Francine Sawyer and Beth Riley. And then obviously the appointment of Mayor Protem Pitts was previously made, so he's the council liaison. But this would then change the dates so everybody doesn't go off next time at the same time. So this will correct the issue of staggering terms for continuity and it will also reappoint those people that all need to be reappointed this time. We did have Kay Rogers and Karen Cohn are both indicating they're leaving and Crystal leaves as a result of her being elected to the council. So the foundation does have some vacancies and I believe they're working to fill those.
I appreciate Robbie's leadership on that and I appreciate Crystal's assistance with the foundation and I'm glad that she's on council with us now. So, so moved.
Second.
And we vote, we have five of a vote. The last item is the appointment of the Infrastructure Management Advisory Committee. Those are, all those appointments were two-year, would be reappointed and that'd be Bill Cabara, Leah Cabara, Dave Moritz and Matt Ulikaya.
So I'll make a motion to move that.
I'll second.
That passes by a five zero vote. So that would collect us back up to item number 20.
Okay.
I would have skipped around, what were they?
Now it is time to, for, now it is time to hear individual council member information items, starting with Councilwoman Miles.
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Councilmember Zimmerman.
So I was really honored to attend the digging ceremony over at the high school, the groundbreaking, which I thought was fantastic. It was a really fun ceremony and very exciting, the energy in that ceremony and even the conversations afterward with everybody were fantastic. It was, you could really feel how excited everybody was. And I wanted to say that I thought Dr. Ken Miller did a fantastic job with the presentation and with handling that whole ceremony. So that was great.
Councilmember Colacott.
Yes, I also attended the groundbreaking with Councilwoman Miles and Zimmerman and our mayor. It was a great, great event. And I think they had the choir do a rendition of the Star Spangled Banner. I can honestly say that was the best rendition of that song that I've ever heard. And hopefully we can, they can move on to the Anaheim Stadium for an Angels game or something, but I was very impressed. Let's see, on January 8th, I represented the city at a reception hosted by General Muth, United States Army Recruiting Command in Cyprus. This was the first stop in his nationwide tour to increase recruitment. And I had the privilege of meeting General Muth and his command staff and offered our support as a city to, in meeting his objectives. And let's see, finally on January 17th, just last week, I attended the League of Cities Environmental Policy Meeting. This is my first meeting on this appointment to the Environmental Policy Committee. When they opened that committee, or before they opened the committee meetings, they had a general presentation on the governor's budget and the status of the legislature up there. And I think our city manager put it properly, that we're very different than the legislature and the governor is. We're a very conservative city and we're very much into low-density development and local control. And I think we're in for some interesting times over the next few years in dealing with the legislature and the governor. There's, granted it's a small city, we can't stop legislation or make major changes to the legislation, but as a council, we're all going to have to put on our thinking caps and find ways that we can perhaps soften the blows for some of the initiatives for Villa Park and find ways to, you know, keep Villa Park as it is in light of these changes. Finally, on the Environmental Policy Committee met, and our focuses over the next year are going to be on water supply, stormwater compliance costs, which have steadily increased over the past 30 years that I've been involved in that program, and also the homeless issue. So we're going to be working on those issues through the policy committee and of course those recommendations will go up to the General Assembly. So with that.
Yes, sir.
I unfortunately could not make the digging, the Great Dig. I had an oral surgeon in my mouth that day and unfortunately I didn't fare very well for like a week later. So I'm still not doing very well. But any rate, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce two of our guests to our fine city here in Villa Park, who I think just got off the airplane from China and have Matthew and Kyle are here visiting us and are going to stay with my wife and I for about 10 days to two weeks. And it's going to be 17 days? Okay, 17 days. My social director has corrected me. 17. Welcome, guys.
Welcome.
So glad to have you here.
We're honored to have you here. Welcome.
I also want to bring the people's attention the pancake breakfast and the Villa Park Women's League Celebration, the 50-year celebration that's coming up on February the 2nd. Keep that in mind and, you know, we're serving a lot of pancakes, I guess, that day.
Pancake breakfast is the same day?
At the high school, yeah. February the 2nd.
My birthday.
So that's it. That's all I have. Thank you. Welcome, guys.
Well, thank you. Thank you one and all for your comments. I was blessed to attend the groundbreaking ceremony at Villa Park High School. That was phenomenal. I also attended the ACC OC Ethics Training, so to speak, with Councilman Zimmerman. I think we're all ethically trained up for the year now. I appreciate the, appreciate the ACC OC putting that on and our friends, what law firm is that again?
Well, is that Mel Richardson?
Yes, it was.
I trained him and then he left me. I'm not bitter, that's okay.
I thought I'd bring that up for you.
Thanks, I know that.
And looking forward to opening day ceremonies here for Little League, obviously looking forward and will be attending the 50th anniversary of the Women's League. But opening day ceremonies for our Little League is right around the corner and...
February 23rd.
Thank you, Crystal. I figured she'd have that at hand.
You know that well.
And I look forward to seeing everybody out there. Be safe, be kind to one another, please drive carefully in the rain. And you got one other thing?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot something earlier. I just want to bring it to everyone's attention. It's something we may consider as a council. And I don't know if it's appropriate to do it at this point in time or wait until the next council meeting, but as we were talking about the committees and the members of the committees, it'd be my suggestion that, to your point about ethics and things like that, that each committee member serving on the city, based on some things that have transpired recently.
Ethics training.
Have ethics training and also sexual harassment training. We all, five of us sitting up here, have to do that?
I think it's a really good idea, you know, ethics training, sexual...
I apologize for missing that, but...
No, ethics training and sexual harassment training, I think are absolutely essential. And it is frankly not burdensome in any way, shape or form for our committee members, so I concur with that and look forward to having that discussion and...
I don't know if we need to...
I think we might, but we'll let our legal eagle here tell us whether we need to have a motion and on that, not tonight, but obviously at the next meeting.
We do, we take direction to...
Make a procedural?
That's just simply a...
Okay.
Thing that we need to get done.
Okay, all right.
And I give that and I have my, one of my labor guys give the sexual harassment stuff. So we were just talking about getting dates earlier this week or something.
Maybe we can incorporate that into a meeting or something, so that the committee can get together or something, I don't know.
Sure.
Figure out the logistics.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things, I know candidly, other entities do it online, but my preference is in person because you get a different level of engagement and I think it drives home the message. We've done similar training with the Brown Act with the foundation and you get questions and things such as otherwise not, never think about. So I think other people hearing other people's reactions makes a lot of difference. So we'll be scheduling that and be very active. I think it's a great idea and I appreciate Mayor Protem bringing that up.
You know, I have to take it at work as well as for the city. And I think a lot of people probably do anyway, but I think, you know, from, just to help us in the future.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, so the AB 1234, the ethics training that you all have to take, that has to be two hours. And that's what you just did, so you wouldn't have to do that again. So, I mean, to do it in front of a council meeting, I've done it in cities that way before.
I was thinking of a committee meeting or something.
Because they're going through, each one of them is going through a separate training where the ethics and whatever is part of ACC or League of Cities.
Right.
So what we're, he was thinking is the committees.
Oh, I see.
Indeed. Committees. My suggestion on that one.
So not their subcommittees, but the committees of the volunteer participants.
Got it.
Residents.
Can I, I hate going first because I always forget, but I just wanted to say, I too was very pleased with the groundbreaking ceremony, the Great Dig. The groundbreaking ceremony, it was, I agree with Councilman Colacott, that rendition was, gave me chills and amazing. And I know that there were a lot of community members that worked very hard to get that to happen, so it was great and I was very honored to be a part of that and invited and shown, you know, a lot of respect and looking forward to seeing the final product, so.
Big thanks to Kathy Moffett and Dr. Miller and rest of the board. Good luck to everybody at that school. Look forward to some positive changes. They're doing great work over there. The sports programs are phenomenal, they're knocking it out of the park. Football, baseball, basketball, you name it, there, I probably forgot half a dozen other ones, but they're all really doing phenomenal work academically. I think that they're doing great work too, so I'm thankful. And with that, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move, will you adjourn?
Okay. Thank you.